Hi, I'm Jeremy Frostby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're the hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every day, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can view all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues that affect you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
Good evening, everyone, to the Fitchburg Common Council meeting for February 11, 2025. The first thing is to call to the order to the meeting at 7:36. Please stand up for the prayers of allegiance. Thank you. Next roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Ratafratta.
Here.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Here.
Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Vafadari.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You do have a corner, Mayor.
Thank you. So next, item four is public appearances for non-agenda items and new appointments. And we have a mayor proclamation. And tonight, we are going to recognize and honor in February 2025 as a National Black History Month. We are going to do proclamation. So Nicole.
Recognizing and honoring February 2025 as National Black History Month. Whereas National Black History Month is celebrated every February in recognition of achievements by Black Americans and all people of African descent in the United States, and...
Whereas in the face of incredible prejudice and hardship, African-Americans have enhanced and advanced every aspect of American life through courage, determination, faith, and resolve. Their fight for equality, representation, and respect motivates us to continue working for a more promising, peaceful, and hopeful future for every American, and...
Whereas Black History Month calls on Americans to honor the countless scientific, artistic, economic, entrepreneurial, and intellectual contributions of Black Americans, while also acknowledging their ongoing pursuit of full citizenship, equity, inclusion, and justice throughout the nation's history, and...
Whereas the Black History Month 2025 theme, African-American and Labor, celebrates and honors the profound contributions, shedding light on how work, both historically and in the present day, continues to shape the identity, culture, and economic status of Black communities, and...
Whereas the city of Pittsburgh continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world, and...
Whereas the city of Pittsburgh is proud to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in our community and reaffirms its commitment to working alongside community leaders to address inequities experienced by Black residents and to support their overall success and well-being now and tomorrow.
Now, therefore, in recognition of the Black community, past and present in our community, I, Julio Ratafratta, Mayor of the City of Fitchburg, Wisconsin, along with the Common Council, do now proclaim February 2025 to be Black History Month in Fitchburg. I invite all Fitchburg residents to take time this February to learn more about Black history and reflect on the profound contribution of Black Americans celebrating their impact on our community and beyond. This is proclaimed this 11th day of February 2025. So before we take the picture, today, we have a special guest. In our chamber is Reverend Alex G. He is a Fitchburg resident, and he is going to share with us more about the importance of this month in our community and also to share what is the Black Excellence Center is all about. So Reverend, you can come to hear that. Oh, yes, you can come, and then Joe is going to introduce you.
Alexander G. is a lifelong resident of the Madison area, currently a Fitchburg resident, founder and CEO of the Center for Black Excellence and Culture, founding CEO of the Nehemiah Center for Urban Leadership, creator of the Justified Anger Initiative and Black History for a New Day course, which has over 5,000 alumni to its credit, including many Fitchburg staff, lead pastor of Fountain of Life Church, and host of the award-winning podcast, Black Like Me. Please stream this if you have not watched it. It's an amazing podcast. For nearly 35 years, Dr. G. has harnessed the power of social entrepreneurship, leadership, community economic, social, and cultural development projects to advance Black-designed solutions for empowerment and inclusion for the Black community. The Center for Black Excellence and Culture is a culmination of listening to the Black community and fulfilling his life's work of challenging structures that impede Black wellness, as well as advancing Black excellence and advancement through Black cultural celebrations, innovation, leadership development, artistic and theatrical performances, and storytelling, and powerful intergenerational programming and youth leadership development. The center broke ground in the spring of 2024 and will open its doors in late 2025. Reverend Dr. G. earned his bachelor's degree from UW-Madison in the Afro-American History and Economics and his doctorate from Baki Graduate University. He's also the most recent recipient of UW-Madison's honorary doctorate in Humane Letters. He has also been recently tapped to join UW-Madison's Department of African-American Studies as an adjunct faculty. Dr. G. has studied and taught leadership development strategies all across the U.S., as well as in Canada, Mexico, India, South Korea, Thailand, Cambodia, and South Africa. He's a husband of 36 years, a dad of one adult daughter, a published author, guest columnist, coach, mentor, and sought-after thought leader on culture, leadership, cross-cultural leadership, and community transformation theory. Welcome, Dr. G.
Thank you so much. I welcome this opportunity, so thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, members of Fitchburg City Council and Fitchburg citizens who are here. I appreciate that very illustrious introduction. I'm honored to be here today to celebrate Black History Month, particularly here in the city of Pittsburgh. I want to thank you for allowing this to still be a place where Black history is celebrated in our country. That means a lot to me. When I carry a deep sense of pride in our rich heritage, this history motivates me to give back and to contribute to our collective growth. I've been inspired to create initiatives like the Fountain of Life Church, the Nehemiah Center for Urban Leadership Development, Black Like Me podcast, and most recently, I founded the Center for Black Excellence and Culture. These efforts are my way of honoring the legacy of those who came before me. These are places where we celebrate our cultural history and build bridges to members of other communities for the sake of unity. I grew up here in Madison, Wisconsin. I'm also proud to say that I was one of the early students at Aldo Leopold Elementary School before Fitchburg was incorporated in the early '80s and in 1971, when the school was surrounded completely by cornfields. There was nothing between stop and go in Leopold but cornfields. And I received a good education there and actually keep in touch with two of my teachers. But I didn't learn about the contributions of Black people there. I learned about slavery, and I listened to my friend Snicker in our social studies classes. We talked about it. And that experience, along with my family's journey, shaped my passion for strengthening the Black community through learning and sharing and celebrating of our culture and our excellence. A few years ago, well, let me just say, just while on that point, I'm not sure if we have sufficiently tied the lack of that type of history and the educational performances of our children. But it's hard to stay engaged as a child when you're one of two Black students in a classroom and your history is trivialized and it's only, we only talk about the most wretched and dark part of it, and we spoke nothing of the Harlem Renaissance or Black innovation, of inroads and creation, and innovation in medicine, and music, and performance, and academics. It wasn't until I was a student at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, where I actually learned that we contributed to this country, and it transformed me deeply. A few years ago, before the onset of the pandemic, I was able to be a part of the Year of Return, group of African-Americans, who, about three of us, who returned to West Africa, to Ghana, to commemorate the 400th anniversary of the transatlantic slave trade. And during part of that tour, we visited a slave dungeon. And we sat there for a few hours while a tour guide explained American history to us. He explained that many of the African citizens were taken from that part of the country. A good part of the folks who did come to the Americas actually came through that slave dungeon. They called it a castle, but it was a slave dungeon. Many died in the space where we sat. When they excavated the floors, three inches down, they found teeth and hair and skin and feces where my ancestors went, dwindled, and pined away. Of those who survived, they had to walk through the door of return and were put on slave ships. And of those who were put on slave ships, many jumped on board, jumped overboard, smothered their children to not be a part of what they saw coming. Of those who did make it to the United States of America, because most of the Africans actually went to Brazil, more went to Brazil than the United States of America and the Caribbean. Of those, maybe 5% who were taken came to America. Of those who didn't die because of all of the diseases that were taking place, survived and raised children and sharecropped and built universities and fraternities and sororities and hospitals that served Black people. And so that day, on that Tuesday morning, when we sat in that slave dungeon, the guy looked at us and he said, "You Black Americans are the descendants of the strongest of our strong." And he made some mixture in clay, and he wiped it on each of our arms, and he said, "You're victorious." I probably have not felt anything that powerful outside of a very profound religious experience in my life. And in that moment, I said, "Whatever this idea is that I'm conjuring up about a center that talks about the Black community and its need to celebrate will focus on the diaspora, and it will focus on strength, and we will not talk about the Middle Passage. It's important, it's real, but there are enough places to talk about it. But I realize in that dungeon that my history did not begin on a slave ship or on the shores of the United States of America. It began in West Africa, where folks were proud and taught us how to survive. We came back and founded the Center for Black Excellence and Culture because the focus would be on the African diaspora, the history and the impact of people from Africa, the people from the Caribbean, the communities that identify as Afro-Latino and African-Americans, would talk about our collective stories and impact on the state of Wisconsin and the way that we have committed ourselves, died for and lived for the ideals of this state and its motto of being forward. It's motivated me to create space where we can tell stories and have plays and book festivals and film festivals, spaces for innovation, youth leadership development, where children can come from all over South Wisconsin, Southern Wisconsin, and study and learn about the contributions of Black people in the state of Wisconsin, that we love this state and have contributed to it as well. In the past three and a half years, we've been able to raise $30 million in order to build this facility. We're only just a million short of a completely debt-free facility. We're topping our facility off with the last steel beam tomorrow. Fendorf Construction promises me that we'll be finished by December. And this time next year, we'll be celebrating a soft opening in the month of February, talking about this tremendous work. It's brought our community and our communities together, not just African-American communities, but those from the African diaspora and a broader community. And the work of the community to support my history, our history, has made me proud to be a member of this community because many of my colleagues around the country could not believe that the state of Wisconsin would come behind such an innovative idea, but it has. Misinformation has caused people to think that by celebrating the specific cultures of people like Black Americans, it will further divide America, but nothing could be further from the truth. America is divided when it doesn't know truth. It's truth. African-American history is American history, and by understanding it, we gain a fuller understanding of America's laws, wealth, educational systems, health disparities, et cetera. It was the famed African-American author James Baldwin who stated, and I'll paraphrase, "To the extent that all Americans do not understand African-American history, they do not understand themselves." As it was mentioned earlier, that I've just recently been tapped to become an adjunct faculty member in the African-American History Department. Proud to be a graduate from that program 40 years ago. And I'll be teaching a course that's called "Rebuilding Black Societies Through Cultural, Social, and Economic Development Using Nehemiah and the Center for Black Excellence and Culture as Case Studies" because the cycle of studying and sharing Black history can have a viral and powerful impact on society. As we strengthen our Black communities, we become even greater partners to the greater community, the broader community. We have much to offer and celebrate, and we are part of the fabric of this community, and we need to celebrate that. We should feel free to continue to celebrate the celebrations of Black history because of its power to move us ahead together. Thank you so much for giving me this space this evening.
Thank you very much. It's okay, this is for you. Well, you want to say something?
Yes.
Okay. So you have five, three minutes.
I'm not going to take that long. Hey, I first met Reverend G. about 25 years ago, maybe closer to 30, at the Mount Zion Baptist Church at one of the very first meetings when the, when what was going to eventually become the Nehemiah Project was being discussed. And I was there with a group from another church in town. And it was, it was such an inspiring meeting. It was such an inspiring discussion. And to see what the Nehemiah Project has become now is really amazing. This man has so much energy and so much enthusiasm for what he's doing. And he also happens to be a customer of mine. But we, we have a history that goes back a little ways. We're not, you know, I wouldn't say we're super close to each other, but I've been able to observe the work that is being done. And I, I think the work to bring more unity to Madison, to Fitchburg, to this whole area is important work. And Reverend G. is one of the main driving forces in making it happen.
Thank you, Jay. Okay, so next, we move to item five in the agenda. It's a consent agenda. Oh, no, no, sorry.
No.
We have two people that are registered to speak. David Harford, Nancy Harford. This is a non-agenda item? Non-agenda. Okay, come in. You have three minutes. Okay, so this is for you. Oh, you have it there? All right?
Really?
My wife will go first.
The 2012 McGaw Park Master Plan, approved and adopted by a common council, emphasized both woodlot enhancement and balance. Our 1718, approved by a common council in 2018, allowed the Mike Healy Adaptive Restoration Prairie Restoration Project, aka the McGaw Park Forest Management Project, to be implemented only in areas 1 and 5 of McGaw Park. It did not allow the Mike Healy Adaptive Restoration Project to be implemented in areas 2, 3, and 4. Contrary to what the city forester has frequently stated, our 1718 did not preclude or prevent the Parks Department or the city forester from doing their job of maintaining a safe woodlot with walkable trails in areas 2, 3, and 4. In fact, the Parks Department cut a new trail and removed several unsafe trees in Area 3 as requested by an adjoining neighbor. Thus, Parks Department agreed that adjoining neighbors are significantly impacted by their neighboring McGaw Park. In contrast to the McGaw Park Master Plan, the Mike Healy Adaptive Restoration Forest Management Plan, approved by the Parks Commission, was not approved by common council because council recognized the need for balance, and the Adaptive Restoration Plan did not provide anything close to the woodlot enhancement or balance called for in the master plan. The Adaptive Restoration Plan took an entirely new direction and advocated a very different future for the McGaw Park woods. There is no woodlot management enhancement, excuse me, or balance in the Adaptive Restoration Plan. Instead, it turns the entire woodlot acreage into an oak savanna or prairie with only a few scattered oak and hickory trees, not a woods. The Fitchburg community never approved that open savanna concept for the entire McGaw Park woodlot. That is not balance. Thank you. Nancy, that one was an agenda item, so I don't know. David, do you have any non-agenda item to discuss?
I would disagree that that was not an agenda item. I was talking about the McGaw Park Master Plan, which I do not see on the agenda.
It's part of the resolution, part of the discussion.
But this discussion is a separate item. It's a separate resolution.
What's the name of the agenda item that you're saying it covers?
Is the resolution R202024, City of Fitchburg Forest Management Plan update.
And where did my wife mention anything about Resolution 2024?
This is a related item to that resolution. Okay, do you have anything to add, David?
I'm going to talk about chapter, Fitchburg Ordinance, Chapter 30, Article 2.
About what? About...
You're going to give me my three minutes, or?
I will, sir.
Fitchburg City Ordinance, Chapter 30, regulates the environment of the land in Fitchburg. Chapter 30, Article 2, covers erosion and stormwater management. Its purpose is to control and, if possible, prevent soil erosion and minimize stormwater runoff increases. The objectives are to preserve natural resources, prevent impairment to property, protect the quality of public waters, preserve wildlife in conservancy areas, and protect and promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the people of Fitchburg. Section 3020 defines land disturbing activities to mean any land alterations or disturbances that may result in soil erosion, sedimentation, or change in runoff, including but not limited to the removal of ground cover, grading, excavating, and filling of land. 30-22 requires an erosion control permit and a compliant erosion management plan if land disturbing activities exceed 4,000 square feet. 30-23 requires a stormwater control permit and a complaint, or compliant stormwater management plan if the city engineer determines that the land development activities may significantly increase downstream runoff volumes, flooding, soil erosion, water pollution, or property damage. Under 30-25, Article 2 is violated if any land condition results in excess runoff or erosion to adjacent land, public streets, or water bodies. Fitchburg is considering the approval of a land development plan that first removes 90% of the trees and the invasive ground cover on 27 acres in McGaw Park. Then it develops that 27 acres into a prairie that reached, may reach stability in 10 to 20 years. First of all, how can the removal of 90% of trees on 27 acres be construed to prevent soil erosion and minimize stormwater runoff increases? How would that preserve natural resources, prevent impairment to property, and preserve wildlife in conservancy areas? Second, under Article 2, are they, these are land disturbing activities on 27 acres. It is a land development plan that will initially cause increased erosion and stormwater runoff. Why is there no erosion management plan or permit, no stormwater management plan or permit presented in this plan? Do the common council and mayor think that Chapter 30, Article 2, does not apply to this plan? Chapter 30, Article 2 is ignored. What protection do land, if Chapter 30, Article 2 is ignored, what protection do landowners bordering these 27 acres in McGaw Park receive?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, we move to the consent agenda. Second. Any comments, questions? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And you pose?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Mayor, if a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to move Resolution R2024 to right now on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of moving up Resolution R2024, say aye.
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 And you pose, the motion carries. Okay, so this one is under Tree Advisory. What is this one? Okay. Uh, okay, one second, I'm organizing the papers. So, Nicole, you need to move the resolution.
I move to approve Resolution Number R2024, the City of Fitchburg Forest Management Plan update.
Second.
Did the Tree Advisory Committee approve?
We did.
Did the Park Commission approve?
Parks approved.
Okay, thank you. So who is going to, we have Scott Endel, our Park Director. Oh, David, Park Commission has an amendment, isn't it?
Yeah, can the amendment be explained?
Can you explain the amendment in Park Commission? They removed the...
I can cover that if you'd like, Alder Herbst. Parks Commission updated, I'm sorry, amended the resolution to remove the whereas clause stating "Updates to the management plan shall include planting a buffer of native trees and shrubs along the park boundary as appropriate." So the clarification is, is which motion do we have on the table? As amended by Parks or as approved by Tree Advisory?
Okay.
The Park Commission removed that?
Yes. Can I ask why?
Well, we're, let's go first, and then I'm going to call the neighbor. We have plenty of people to speak, and then we are going to ask questions after that.
That makes sense.
Okay, so the other thing I want to mention is the council and myself, we received several emails. We received around 26 emails, kind of half and half in support and half in opposition. So the council received those emails, so we were able to read them before the meeting. So, okay, Scott, go ahead.
Thank you. Maybe as a prelude to the resolution, I did want to mention in our most recent updated Park and Open Space Plan, 2025 to 2030, what we're doing with this resolution is really asking for authorization to proceed to try and begin to start to implement some of the goals that are identified within the Park and Open Space Plan. And actually, if I might, include it in the vision statement for the plan. The City of Fitchburg Park Open Space and Rec System strives for responsible preservation and sustainable stewardship of the city's natural environment and resources. It does have a goal, Goal Number 2, protect Fitchburg's natural, cultural, and historical resources. It also has an action item, Number 10, on page 5, to maintain and enhance the city's urban tree canopy forests, savannas, and prairies. Then actually, on page 59, it further indicates upland resources. Numerous forests, prairies, and grassland natural areas are located on city system properties. The city should maintain these properties according to best management practices in any management plans developed by the city. Additionally, forest and prairie restoration and management plans provide options for resource management based on an assessment of the site, including vegetation, habitat classifications, topography, hydrology, and wildlife. These plans identify specific operations and maintenance schedule and resources for completion of management prescriptions. So that really is kind of the backdrop to the resolution and what we're trying to accomplish within the resolution. And it is stated that before that this plan, the Magaw Park Master Plan, actually included, created a woods lot management plan, which was part of Magaw Park. And that was approved in 2012. And actually stated previously, it also, the management plan specifically for the Magaw Park Woodlot and S. Johnson Neighborhood Park was completed in 2016 and approved by the council in 2018, which actually excluded areas 2, 3, and 4, which have been mentioned. You know, this is really one of the 10 woodlots that we have with Magaw. It's one of the 10 woodlots that we have within our park system. Certainly, Magaw Park has a lot of interest, but this resolution also allows the staff to begin to start to put management plans together for the other nine woodlots that we have within our community. And we think that as the Park and Open Space Plan kind of advises us and recommends us to proceed with, that's kind of the impetus behind the resolution to allow staff to go ahead and begin that work.
Okay, so I will call now the people and the audience. And then they stay close because we are going to ask you more questions after. Okay? So, okay, so, thank you, Scott. So I want to call to the microphone. Okay, let's see. Patrick Cheney, he wishes to speak in opposition.
This resolution needs to be killed for so many reasons. Please read the two pages you each have, except I couldn't get one to Donald. No word from the city was given to any neighbors or Magaw Woods trail hikers of this. My one-hour conversation with an alder, my hour-and-a-half discussion with the mayor, plus more, and those two full pages still don't have all the opposing reasons and points against this. I have three minutes. This resolution is an attempt by staff employee to pass this on a second try after a prior council rejected it before. Park staff know of high opposition in the past and that nothing has changed, so this time, they just don't ask or tell us. Slipping this through like this is non-transparent government. Is it a better process when a non-resident writes a resolution, gets sponsors, it's referred out, council passes it, and then send out a postcard that I fear would say, "Repass this. It's a done deal. If you don't like it, too late, too bad for you." Or, an employee's idea is considered, affected neighbor or residents are asked opinions in survey or public input sessions. If favored, write a resolution, refer it out, and through council for approval. If opposed, the idea is dead. No resolution, no staff time, or committee or council work is wasted on it. Were two sponsors sought as the two newest, less than a year on council, least likely to know of past heated controversy? The two other alders of District 3 and 4 knew nothing about this resolution until I brought it up and asked them. Neither were invited to many onsite tours of these woods and trails all last summer. Sponsors, sorry, but I think you were taken advantage of. You were played. But now is your chance to represent constituents and oppose or severely restrict this proposal by amending. Kill this now. Renew orders protecting Magaw Woods and all wooded areas until those neighbors agree for theirs. Don't wipe out, destroy, and take away a unique forest trail system enjoined by many who come here as a zero-sum game, giving even more to open areas to some asking, who already have large open areas around here, plus wide-open McKee Park. Homeowners, park patrons, trail hikers like this as is. This will ruin viewscapes, trees, trails, habitat, and destroys free existing natural protections of neighborhood properties. How is this fair to take in existing woods from all those who like this as is and give it away to some other interests? This could be amended to remove all, except only allowing for a new policy with much public input. Vote no on this as written. This woods is not getting any worse. It is stable, and the many oak trees I protected are tall and doing great. Honeysuckle is here to stay. Get over it. It is no longer, and not the dirty word invasive, as too often used. It has value keeping worse things out. The plan says nothing grows under it, and that is a good thing. Clearing it creates open ground for all firsts and fasts, much worse woods, and I can prove it.
Thank you. Next, I will call Dennis Moore. Oh, he only wishes to speak in opposition. Do you want to speak? He's here? No, thank you. And then I will call Robert Dahmerhausen. He's also registered in opposition. Also, I have another one. They said he wishes to speak.
Robert is not here.
Oh, Robert and Ron are... Okay, sorry. Thank you. Then I will call Debbie Harful. He wishes to speak in opposition. And then I will call Nancy, too. Yeah, I don't know, they're not here. I want to speak. Yeah, but he's not here, he told me. Oh, Ron, do you want to speak?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to call you after them.
They're at the table, let them go.
Okay, sorry for the confusion.
There's two of us.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
If you vote yes on R 220-24, you are voting for Mike Healy's Adaptive Restoration Plan to turn the Magaw Park Woods into a prairie. You are voting for deforestation. You are voting for destroying the largest public woodlot in Fitchburg. For creating an open prairie of about 30 acres with few trees where there are currently thousands of trees. For burning those 30 acres of prairie annually in an area surrounded by homes, some with no access to city water or fire hydrants. You are voting for removing over 90% of the existing trees, over 90% of the shade, over 90% of the quiet space for walking on wooded trails. You are voting for removing over 90% of the stormwater retention, over 90% of the CO2 absorption that the thousands of dense trees provide. You are voting for ignoring the Fitchburg policy of recognizing that community parks are also neighboring parks for adjoining property-owning taxpayers. You are voting for ignoring the voices of the entire community to protect the wooded area. If you really want to protect the wooded area of Magaw Park, vote no, or vote to table this resolution. If you vote no, or to table, you're saying, let's wait a minute. Let's not rush if nothing will happen until 2026. You are saying, let's sit down together and work out our differences as reasonable adults. We have common ground. We have a community goal to protect and preserve our precious Fitchburg Woodlot. We can come up with a plan to actually manage the woods and protect the trees if we listen to each other. We can start by removing invasive shrubs like honeysuckle and buckthorn and fallen and dead trees, but keep all the living green trees to provide cooling and shade, stormwater retention, and CO2 absorption. We can achieve balance by having a large, open savanna in some of the area and a large, quiet woods in the rest of it. Balance means a compromise, not all or nothing. Please vote no, or vote to table, so we can work out a compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
David?
In 2018, we convinced a majority of the common council to not approve the Adaptive Restoration Plan created by Mike Healy for areas 2, 3, and 4 of Magaw Park. They agreed with us that the environmental impacts that would result from the removal of over 90% of the trees and the invasive ground cover on 27 acres in Magaw Park were not recognized, let alone minimized, in the plan. Today, nothing has changed. The land disturbing changes to turn 27 acres of woods into a prairie will cause the same increases in noise and light from park activities, stormwater runoff, and erosion to landowners adjoining Magaw Park. We again asked the Parks Department to add how they would minimize these impacts to the Adaptive Restoration Plan created by Mike Healy. They again refused. We again asked the Parks Department about the cost, duration, type, and level of chemical use planned for the removal and control of invasive ground cover. Again, no information. The Adaptive Restoration Plan created by Mike Healy is the same plan now as it was in 2018. Goal 3 still says that Fitchburg will be a good neighbor and minimize the impacts of ecological restoration activities and public use of Magaw Park to adjoining landowners. Before the common council considers the approval of R 220-24, please get answers to the following questions. Why does the Park Department still not attempt to minimize these environmental impacts under Goal 3 of the plan? Why does Fitchburg Ordinance, Chapter 30, Article 2, not apply to this plan? Should there be an erosion and stormwater management plans completed before this plan is approved? Why can we not get information on the cost, duration, type, and level of chemical use on invasives for areas 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5? Why does the plan developed by Mike Healy, a private company adaptive restoration, which turns 27 acres into a prairie, supersede the community-driven Magaw Park Master Plan, which says, "Recognize the value of the woods, protect it, and manage it back to health"? Why is the tree-friendly city of Fitchburg considering a plan that removes 90% of the trees and 27 acres in Magaw Park when the rest of the world is trying to save trees because of their positive impact on the environment? If you cannot get satisfactory answers to these questions, please vote against or table R 220-24 until you do.
Thank you. Okay, I am calling Ron. And then I am calling also Karen Lawrence. She wishes to speak in opposition. Yeah, you can come to the microphone. Karen, too.
Good evening. My name is Ron Dahmerhausen. I live off of Magaw Road and Dahmer's Drive in the Dahmer Village neighborhood. The west edge of my property borders Magaw Park. Some of my objections to the proposed plan for Magaw Park are: I have a hard time agreeing with the thought process that 95% of the Magaw Park trees are dead. Mother Nature has a way of nurturing trees and protecting them. Yes, they may not be perfect, but they are green. The oak savanna plan, as far as implemented so far, is just a way of gutting Magaw Park and hoping 20 or 30 years, we have something. I use Magaw Park for walking. I get away from my computer and TV and get some quiet time in. I enjoy being able to walk around seeing anything but trees and greenery, plus an occasional walker and many dog walkers. I am a quiet person. I am not interested in listening to everybody else's conversation. Yes, when I get closer to the baseball diamonds, the soccer field, or the shelter, I expect to hear the parents and fans cheering on their teams. So I attempt to plan my walks at other times. I like to have some high green growth along the walkway. I am not interested in seeing what the people over in the crossings are doing, nor do I want them to be able to look into my bedroom. Nor do I want park staff to design the current parkways as I live within 200 feet of the current parkway, and to me, that is close enough. Yes, it is a Fitchburg park, but we care for it as if it's ours. Each and every park should have its own identity. So if anyone or a single park department staff person wants an oak savanna park, please send it to McKee. Hopefully, if you want a green park with trees, come to Magaw. I hope to see you and yours at one of the many Magaw Park walking trails. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Karen?
Yes, I will try to speak. I usually get a hoarse voice. I'm hoping I handed out the right print that I did on my reasons, so that if I lose my voice, you'll be able to read them. And it should say just Magaw Park Woods, and then the number behind it. Not resolution. There's another letter I wrote to the council members a while back, and I didn't receive any... Oh, I hate those things. I didn't receive any answers, and so I wasn't sure if you got them or not. And you mentioned tonight that you had some emails, and I don't know if mine was in there or not. So some of this may be redundant. And then when I heard other people speak tonight, I realized that there's a lot about this that I thought I knew was going to be an oak savanna, and now I hear prairie, and they are two different things. And I'm wondering if you, as aldermen and voters, and they are two different things. And I'm wondering if you, as aldermen and voters, have had a presentation on this from somebody that is impartial and knows about these things? Yes, no? Have we had a presentation? Okay, yes. Because I think that is something that should be done. Oak Savannas are not easy to do. Prairies are probably a lot easier, but it takes a certain type of soil, too, and a certain aspect. And I don't believe that ever was a prairie. Everybody thinks that Prairies and Oak Savannas were the only things down here in southern Wisconsin. That's not true at all. They didn't flourish every place. As a matter of fact, if you have never read about Oak Savannas, you should do some reading upon it. Or if you've never even seen one, go out to Prairie Moraine. There, the Parks Department of Dane County is reestablishing—not reestablishing, well, they could be, because initially, they chose that because there's pakun, which is a rare prairie plant. It's a rare savanna plant. So they have done an excellent job. It's on an incline, which is where a lot of them were. And I suggest strongly that you find out the cost of this over the long run, too, because I don't think people have told you that Prairies require burning every three years or so, otherwise, they're going to revert to an oak wood. And I am against chemical spraying. I hope that's not going to be used, but I don't say how it cannot be used initially. So there's a lot of costs in here that I don't think people realize. And it behooves you, as alderman, to know some of this stuff yourself, not just depend on somebody else's vision of this and word of this. They might have some conflict of interest, too. So that's all I have to say.
We received your email on February 6. Yeah. Okay, this is for you. So next is Mary Hess. Is she here? Okay. She wishes to speak in opposition.
Okay. I'm Mary Hess. So anyways, okay. I have two dogs, which I walk in McGaw Park. Occasionally, we encounter other dogs, often without a leash. My dogs are often reactive and although in training, to stop this behavior, the ability to leave a path and go on another allows me to avoid the confrontation. The woods and the bushes offer sufficient screening allowing my dogs to relax and continue their training without interruptions. Other owners exhibit similar behavior, particularly when they are approaching us. This helps dog owners prevent conflicts and avoid injuries. The denuding of the woods would eliminate the coverage. It is so important for this reason, the new entrance to McGaw Park could alter its current atmosphere of privacy for walkers and their dogs. Another point is that the developed area near the entry of McGaw Parks contains sticks, weeds, sharp pieces of wood, which have caused injury to my dogs' feet and myself. The area contains various obstacles that make it difficult to walk through the area. If this is a representation of the vision of those responsible, they should avoid interfering with the rest of the park woods to preserve its unique natural environment. The paths that allow a quiet, secluded walk in nature will be gone. The shelter of trees and bushes will be gone. That will make it like—which make it like a county park will be eliminated. And the coolness found in the middle of the woods on a hot summer day would be turned into a hot field in the blazing sun. Wildlife such as birds, squirrels, groundhogs, fox, and deer have left the area where they have taken away the trees and the honeysuckle. After leaving this area, wildlife can be observed in the wood area. Human encroachment has already damaged many animal habitats. McKee offers an open environment while McGaw is more county park field. Lastly, the park maintenance of the trails has not cost the city of Fitchburg a dime because it has been maintained by the Neighborhood Association. The neighborhood created a unique space for residents, visitors, dog owners, and nature lovers to enjoy. The paths were improved to facilitate navigation and observation of the environment by the Neighborhood Association, and we are eager to keep maintaining the paths. Additionally, this will incur no cost to the city. In times of budget cuts, destroying McGaw Park for one person's personal and financial gain seems highly questionable. A feasible compromise for the plan would be to retain the currently cleared area and develop according to the proposed vision, while preserving the remainder of McGaw Park as a natural woodland area for walking. This approach would meet the preferences and requirements of both types of visitors rather than neglecting the need of one group. That's it.
Thank you. Next, Michaela Cheney. Is she here? Okay, she registered in opposition. Yeah, I am. Do you want me to read this? The walking trail keeper will react if dogs calmer. It is easier to work on training them when they can't see every other dog owner walking around the park, especially when people let their dogs off-leash when they are not supposed to. And the other one is for Mariah Cheney. She is only registered in opposition. I am not going to read this. And then I want to call Caroline Swigger. Swigger, yeah, she wishes to speak in support.
I want to speak in support for several reasons. And one is because an important point of opposition that the resolution speaks to. No one denies the aesthetic, even to some extent, the recreational value of trees. But what we truly should oppose is the particular kinds of trees that the maintenance is going to try to control, which are, as I understand, buckthorn, black locust, and honeysuckle. Beautiful they may be, many of our invasives—I'm not sure the source of those particular trees. I think it may be true. But many of our invasives came from gardens because they're beautiful flowers, lupins. I'm originally from New England area. And lupins are so beautiful, but—oh, sorry, loosestrife, purple loosestrife. It's beautiful, but it overtakes waterways, clogs it up. Forests are very complex systems, and feelings about property, of course, are very complex. But what is undeniable is that these trees, invasive trees, do not provide the proper food for wildlife. Yes, some deer are very adaptable. Squirrels can get by if there's some oak trees. But you have other—if you remove those and allow native trees to grow and understory as well, then you have more food for pollinators, for songbirds. So I only—I have read some of John Curtis's Plant Communities of Wisconsin to say, well, these are the woods we have. It's true. I respect the speaker who said, yes, an Oak Savannah is very different from a prairie, and we have diverse ecosystems here. But it's clear that these invasive trees do not belong. And I have a lot of respect for what I've seen of some of the clearing that Fitchburg has done. I was surprised on my own jogging trail, and I said, oh, no, the trees are gone. But actually, it's good. Change—this has changed. That needs to happen. It is, as I understand, it was the city's commitment when they accepted funds for purchasing the land from the Wisconsin Land Stewardship Fund in 1975. These are complex systems. This is why we have a city forester to make the decision about what should be done. And neighbors for a community park should not have veto power over these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we are at the end of the register. And now we have our forester, Anna Healy. Anna, do you wish to say anything?
No, not really. All I'll say is, you know, if you want information, have questions, you know, you can ask me. That's it.
The lots, I think council should see it. It's only like five slides.
I also sent to the council this afternoon a video that Factv put together. I hope you have watched that. Anna, do you have that presentation?
So you want the video?
PowerPoint is what I would—I believe Scott has it here.
Okay, so I guess I'm not—what are you asking for?
Dave mentioned that you had a presentation in Park Commission about this, your plan for this area?
No, she put together some slides, historical slides that I think council should—
Yeah, I did. I mean, it doesn't—if you—I can bring them up. I'm actually at home because I have a sick kid, but I can bring the slides up if that's helpful. I don't know. It's really about the aerial photos on what was in the park before. Let me see if I can bring those up.
Scott, can you come to the microphone because we are going to ask you more questions? So one of the things that I want to clarify, what we are trying to do here and what it was mentioned to me is, the city doesn't have a policy on—a citywide policy about how to manage all our woodlots. What we're trying to do is to implement a policy that is not only for McGaw, it's for the only—the other 10 woodlots that we have in the city that we need to maintain. So that one is one of the things that this resolution will allow. And the other thing is, the intention is that when they put together this policy and plan, you need to have with the action plan and also with the budget, how much it's going to cost to do what we are planning to do here. So nothing is going to happen in 2025 because 2025 is going to be the year to plan, to put together this policy, that then it's going to come back to the Tree Committee, the Park Committee is going to be shared with the—you know, for public input. And then we are going to decide what is the best action plan to follow for this woodhole, how to maintain all of these woodlots in the city. So the city is not planning to go tomorrow and start removing 5,000 trees like some of the other email have mentioned. This plan is not going to cost hundreds of thousand of dollars. So I want to clarify that. So what we are trying to do here is to implement a policy, create a policy, a policy that we don't have. So, Scott, what is—does it have the presentation? Do you have it?
Anna, I've got the presentation up on my laptop. If you want to work your way through it, let me know when to change slides.
Okay, sure. So—sure. So, sorry, my son is really sick, so that's why I'm at home. But so there's—I guess there was a question. There's questions about whether this was savanna or not. Really, what we had done is we looked at the survey notes of what the surveyors found when they walked through this area in 1833. And they walked from south to north, Section 14 to 15. McGaw Park is in Section 15, I believe. And they—you know, this is what they saw, which was bar oak trees and prairie plants. So that's very indicative of a savanna. And then we did put together some aerial photos that just show that the area was—in—we had, you know, 1937 aerial—so this is the appraisal photo of when McGaw Park was purchased in 1975. It was purchased by the town of Madison—or excuse me, the town of Fitchburg—as a community park with Noel Stewardship Funds from the state of Wisconsin. So it was purchased with state of Wisconsin taxpayer dollars for—as a community park for the town of Fitchburg. And you can see here, there is savanna structure. You can see there are oak trees. And probably what was pastured is—was probably mostly brom grass. And the nice thing about McGaw Park is it predates the heavy use of herbicides in agriculture. I can appreciate people's concerns about herbicides. Really, what the herbicide that goes on for roundup ready agriculture is much greater than anything that we would use for any kind of management that we're talking about. So we will get—and we have already seen this in the management we've done. You get the reinvasion of the native plants as you go because the seed bank is still there. It wasn't killed by herbicide. But this is the 1975 photo. And then I think I had a 1937 photo as well. So this is the 1976 photo that also shows that savanna structure. And you can see in S. Johnson and in the North Park Edition, you can see those big oak trees. Many of them are still there. We've uncovered the ones in S. Johnson, which is kind of interesting. And then there's the 1937 aerial photo as well. I think I included—yeah, so you see, this is just a side-by-side of the 1937 aerial photo. Again, you can see the structure, the savanna structure with the oak trees. And then what this project started long before I ever worked for the city of Fitchburg. And in 2013, when the project started, which is three years before I started for the city of Fitchburg, that is what the wooded area of Fitchburg looked like, is that 2013 aerial photo. So I don't know if that answers—I don't know if that kind of addresses your issues that you want to be addressed, Dave, but those are kind of the things that I put together.
I just wanted a historical—you know, we hear a lot, it wasn't an Oak Savannah, it was a prairie. I think if you look at the pictures, we have a pretty good historical—I'm just saying, you have a pretty historical of what it was. And, you know, we're at where we're at because of doing no management, I guess, is what I would—
Yes.
Is all I'm going to—all I'm going to add. I don't have much to say.
Madam Mayor, before we—
One second, yeah.
Are you going to—
Anna, do you have anything else to add?
No, I really don't. I'm happy to answer any questions. You know, there's always a lot of talk about this park, and that's how it goes.
Okay, but remember, this policy that is in front of you is not about this park only, okay?
Right, exactly.
We do have a constituent who has been waiting online who would like to make a comment. So I just was wondering if we could get to her before we get to fellow alders. Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Sue? Hello, Sue?
I'm here. I'm just getting the video fired up.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know that you wanted to speak. Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
That's quite all right. It's a lot to juggle all at once. I understand that. I'm Sue Easterday, the Chair of the Parks Commission. And I did send an email to everybody last Friday, but I understand that alders have a lot to read. But I'm just going to go over a little bit of that. And one of the things I want to start with that isn't in the email is there were comments tonight about turning this entire park into a prairie. And I have never heard anybody from the city staff or the Parks Commission or Tree Advisory Committee say any such thing. So that is something that's mistaken on the part of those who are concerned about that. But I'm also echoing then what I did write, is echoing what Anna stated. This land was purchased in 1975. It was open farmland with remnant Oak Savannah on it. So the vista for anyone building their brand-new home there would have been flat farmland with some oak trees. The top three offenders there now are black locust trees, honeysuckle, and buckthorn shrubs. They rob the understory of air circulation and sunlight, which causes disease and death of desired trees, such as oak varieties, eastern white pine, and other pine and spruce varieties. And there's evidence of those trees dying. The disrupted spring sunlight and obliterated summer filtered sunlight kills all native understory plants and prevents the desired tree and shrub plant regeneration. Removing some but not all the black locust trees is not a solution because the remaining trees, once cut from the roots, push up endless, endless thorny, shrubby tree growth with thorns that are about an inch long all the way up and down them. And that's very unpleasant if the deer—the deer aren't going to want to go through it at all at that rate. When wildlife is seen, generally, it's looking for something to eat, and there's nothing much of the honeysuckle, locust, or buckthorn that is nurturing to all the different types of animals we have, from insects all the way up to deer and larger animals like that. When our 1718 was passed prohibiting work in Areas 2, 3, and 4, at the time, including the boundaries of the park at the time—that was 26 acres removed from park management—that was 40% of our largest park, 40% of McGaw Park off-limits. So this prohibition was for five years, and it is now six years. The Tree Advisory Committee has done the most work on asking for this to be removed, and those meetings have been noticed. And when we had the Parks Open Space Plan recently updated, we asked whether we should have this project put in the plan as a specific goal.
Sue, your time is up. Sue, sorry, your time is up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, okay. Okay, I—Donald, do you have a question?
Well, I don't have a question. I just would like to make some comments when we get to that point.
Okay, do you want to go ahead now or no?
Yeah, I can go now.
Okay, go.
Yeah, I mean, I think—I just want to address a couple of things. So I don't think either myself or Alder Raffedary was played. We weren't just basically—we didn't just walk into a situation and blindly just go along with anything. Both of us took the time to actually go and walk through these woods and walk through these parks, I mean, for several hours. We talked with Ms. Healy and Ms. Easterday were both with me when I went. I'm not sure who was with Nicole, and literally pointed out some of the things that were happening in the park that they would like to clean up and as to why. There was another comment related to that we're supposed to, like, know about all of this stuff. And I think that's kind of unfair and unrealistic. That would be like me asking somebody to come in my line of work and just automatically know exactly everything that I do. But being an alderperson in the city of Fitchburg, part of our work is to work closely with city staff and the individuals that were hired and have the expertise in these various areas to work with them. I didn't go into this situation thinking that there was any reason to lie about or mislead any of us about this work. So I wanted to hear both sides of the argument and come to some type of conclusion as to where we want to land with this park and this work that we were doing. The only question I have is that when we were—when we—the Mrs. Healy, her—I believe it's her partner's company has been brought up several times as there's a conflict of interest to some of this work. And I just would like to know, Ms. Healy, is that true? Is there any—could you speak to that a little bit? Because the two hours I spent when we— Because the two hours I spent when we walked in the park, it was never brought up at all. And she showed me some, in detail, like the things that need to be done and sound, sounded very knowledgeable on like how this was going. And also show positive examples of some of the work that was done in those areas that was, that we were trying to resemble once we got to these areas of the parks of work. So that would be my, my only question.
Sure, I can address that, I've addressed that many times. So that was done in, I started working for the city of Fitchburg in 2013, or 2016. The work on this project started in 2012, 13, 14. So this, so the hiring of, you know, Mike Healy happened years before I even worked for the city. The plan was practically done when I started. It was my, one of the very first things I did was try to get this plan approved. And I didn't even, I was brand new in my job. So it was not, um, so, and I had asked my predecessor to come to this meeting to, to speak to that because he's the one that hired Mike Healy, I did not. And we have not hired, I have not hired him to do anything. So it's, it's just, it's unfair, it's a low blow, it really is, it's completely unfair. And the neighbors constantly bring this up just to raise questions about me. And in terms of conflict of interest, you know, I mean, I have nothing to gain by, you know, doing anything in Magaw Park. The reason that we want to do some work in there is for the 32,000 people who live in, for the city of Fitchburg, who live in the city of Fitchburg. So, you know, it's, it's, it's brought up all the time by particular park, park neighbors. It's really unfair, it's completely untrue, and it really borders, borderlines in slander.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that.
Okay, so do we have any other person who wishes to speak here? Scott, no? Okay. So I also want to say that I sent to the council also this afternoon a letter that it was draft in 2018. But our city attorney discussing this, uh, independence issue, okay? So, okay, okay, Gabriela, then Joe.
I was actually curious if, if Nicole and Dave might give a summary of what was discussed in Tree Advisory and Parks and what led to the yay votes.
So, um, sorry, if I go first, Nicole? So all Parks did, one of the members amendment to remove that the city, you know, had to install buffering. And we, we felt like that was making a, um, putting us on the hook for, for things that we aren't necessarily responsible for. You know, that city owns the woodlots, I don't believe we're any obligation to have to install buffers. And once you start, then it's kind of like, where does it, where does it stop? You know, is what the, the Parks Commission felt if neighbors wanted a buffer, it was probably better that they, they installed and owned it because then they'd have control and it wouldn't be, you know, issue, oh, you're not maintaining our buffer. So we just felt the, Parks felt it was better to just not have that, have that in there. That's, that's all I wanted to say on it.
And to keep it.
Yeah, Nicole, yeah.
To, to keep it brief, the Parks, uh, sorry, the Tree Advisory Committee. This actually stemmed from when we were talking about Emerald Ashbore and all of the effort that was being put into trying to keep the trees alive as long as possible. And I was asking in general about, because I am on that committee, asking in general about, you know, where else do we have invasives kind of choking out trees and native plants? And this was brought up. And so we went on a tour, I toured the locations. And then we talked through kind of a, a lot of cost benefit of, again, not so much cost, but like, this is public parks, we need to, this is public lands, we need to reincorporate that. I have, I have a lot of thoughts that I'd like to bring up, but that was more of the Tree Committee just, this was kind of routine in that we agreed six years ago to wait five years. It's now been six years. The city needs to maintain its public lands, we're responsible for those lands. And right now, we have invasive species choking out native trees. And I will argue after losing some of my own big native trees and paying a lot of money, it's really expensive also. So we don't want to lose expensive trees that we can't like repurchase, 100-year-old trees. So that's, that's kind of where we ended, or we started and then where we ended. And as you said, it was unanimous approval.
Thank you. Joe?
So this isn't like my area of expertise, as many Alders probably share. But I did a little bit of Googling and I found an article, I sent it to the council. Oak savanna restoration ties UW Madison arboretum to Madison neighborhood. And it looks like there was kind of a parallel type of a situation about 25 years ago. And kind of similar response, there was a lot of uprising from a neighborhood and opposition. But ultimately, when it came down to it, it's, it seemed like this was an act that not only the science backed, but also kind of indigenous wisdom and knowledge backed up. So I, I would just say that to make two points. One, from what I see and from what I hear from Anna, from folks on Tree Commission, from Sue, there is science to back this up. But also, I often hear this dialogue in Fitchburg about people that say that they're the original residents of Fitchburg. And I also just want to acknowledge that the Ho-Chunk are the original people on this land. And from the reading that I've done, an oak savanna was a land management technique that was shepherded by people that have been here for thousands of years. So I think that's something that we should think about when we're talking about kind of the history of our city and our areas. That at one point, this land was called Dejope, prior to any of us being here. And when we look at restoration, we should also think about the wisdom that they brought through their treatment of the land. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Jim, and then you.
Yeah, just following up with Alder Dansler, his, his comments. You know, one thing that really, and he said it very nicely. But one of the things that really irritates me is when people come in here and say that staff is driving us or that they're making, what I think is personal attacks. Because this council, no matter whether we have one year, two years or how many years on, I think we're very smart people, and I don't say that lightly. If you look at our backgrounds, we're very, very intelligent people. And we do know how to look up information. And we get information that our staff advises on. And just to let you know, I was thinking one way about this, but after I saw the video from Anna Healy and listening to my fellow Alders, I'm just like, I kind of changed my mind. And then when you look at the Resource Conservation Commission, you have a person on there who has spent a lot of years doing land management. And I read his email, and his email makes sense. Because like Alder Maldonado was saying, the science is there. And when you look at that video of, of Anna's, I mean, I'm seeing a lot of dead trees in there. Dead trees that are causing other things not to grow. So when people come in here and say that we're, like, we're not getting all the information or we're being taken advantage of, I think you should think twice about that and look at the people that are elected on this council. Because every one of us brings such great skills to this council to benefit the city of Fitchburg.
Thank you, Jim. Jay, and then Nicole.
Oh, boy, I have a lot.
Well, you do it short.
It's not gonna be short, sorry.
Please, well, I will decide it.
Well, if you decide to cut me off, that is definitely your decision.
Okay, thank you.
I had a large number of questions about this. Some of them have been partially answered, but they aren't really quite useful answers. I asked, I asked the question, what is the expected cost to remove all the invasive species from this area? And I was told between $3,000 to $5,000. That number can't be even close to correct. That would, this is saying that it's depending on how much of the work can be done with current staff. But current staff costs money. So when we send current staff to go and do something like this, $3,000 to $5,000 is maybe 100 hours.
Jay, sorry, is this a budget amendment or is this a forestry management plan? I, I only bring it up because I, I normally kind of love the, some of the rabbit holes you take us down. I think it's like a really creative thought process. But my only worry is this has no money proposed in it. We are not voting on a budget. We are, we are voting on a plan.
I understand what we're voting on. But ultimately, when we, when we vote on plans, eventually there comes budget requests.
There does.
And I think there should, I think we should have some idea what the cost is of what we're proposing.
No, because you don't.
No, we shouldn't have the, any idea what the cost is of what we're proposing.
Let me finish, okay? What I am trying to say, what did I mention before? That we are creating a policy and with a plan of action. And that plan of action, it will breed the budgetary, or how much it's gonna cost to do that. And then the council, we decided when that moment, if we're moving forward with this or no. And this, the idea is that they are gonna work in this policy before the, the 2026 budget is put together. Because this is an, this is an, it's gonna be an operational cost. And we need to decide how much it's gonna cost by that time, if the plan is ready. Because we need to incorporate that for next year budget or the 2027 budget. So this, we are trying to create guidelines here first.
Well, pardon me for thinking that cost is a relevant factor. I mean, I.
Yeah, it's gonna be a factor, but no.
You bet it is, and it's not gonna be $3,000 to $5,000. And it may not be $100,000, I don't know how much it's gonna be, but this number that I was given is not correct. Let me move on to something else.
That was $3,000 to $5,000 annually, wasn't it?
This, this says between $3,000 to $5,000 clearing the invasives in areas two, three and four.
Okay, let's continue, Jay.
That's what I think.
Jay, do you want me to tell you how I got to that number?
I would love for you to do that.
So that, so that basically, if we can forest remove it ourselves, which we would probably do, you know, that number is just, that's most of the plant material to plant the buffer. So it's not expen, I mean, you didn't ask for staff time, you asked for operational dollars, which is what I gave you.
I, I asked what it was going to cost.
Staff time calculations, I could have done that, but that's, that wasn't what I understood you were asking for. But in terms of cash outlay for operating budget, we wouldn't spend more than $3,000 to $5,000 on this.
Also, when we rezone a piece of land, we don't ask how many, how much in taxes it's going to generate. Like, I just feel like this, totally, totally respect, and I'll, I'll be quiet now. I just feel like this idea of making staff propose and estimate a budget years in advance is not quite fair. What we're coming up with is a forestry plan and a policy. And we're going to discuss, staff needs adequate time to come up with a budget. I, I just find this line of questioning kind of inappropriate for the policy in front of us.
Okay, sorry that I think that the cost of doing this matters. Again, I think it's an important thing to consider. We have a 202-page report that, that deals with this one piece of woodland. And while I understand that the, the resolution includes one paragraph that says, oh, and by the way, we're gonna create a policy for these other nine areas, that's great. But really, what we're talking about with this resolution is the implementation of the 202-page Magaw Park Forest Management Plan, which is quite a read. I didn't read the entire thing because 202 pages is a lot. And I wasn't even aware that that document existed until last week. So I read most of it, but didn't get through the whole thing anyhow.
What if? You have more?
Yes, I have quite a bit more. I, I asked a question about what the effect of clearing this area is going to have on the existing wildlife. And the answer to that was the current tangle of invasives does not offer habitat for wildlife. Well, that's just simply patently untrue. I've walked through there many times and seen deer and foxes and all kinds of other animals roaming about, going about the things that animals do. If this becomes an oak savanna, that type of, the types of places that deer like to hide, and I, look, I'm not an expert on these things, but I know that deer like to hide places. And those are going to disappear from this area. So I, I don't, I don't understand why the answer would be that it does not offer a habitat for wildlife, because it clearly does. And we even had in the 202-page document, we even had pictures of trail, from trail cams that showed wildlife in there. So it's not as if they're just avoiding it, they're there. I asked why we would convert this to an oak savanna. Because if there is historical data that this was an oak savanna, it was 100 years ago. Well, sev. Well, the 1937 photo doesn't show an oak savanna.
This is not, okay, continue.
The, the 1937 photograph to me shows, because I've been looking at aerial photographs of Fitchburg for a long time. To me, it shows lots, to me, it shows farmland lots that have tree lines in between them, which are not necessarily oak tree lines. I mean, you know, a lot of the, the tree lines that we see separating agricultural parcels, there's a few scattered oak trees throughout the city. But most of those, most of those parcel dividing lines consist of box elders and other stuff that's just there so that the farmers could know whose property was what. So that doesn't look to me like an oak savanna. I don't know what an oak savanna necessarily looks like. But I would presume it, it consists of more than one or two oak trees in 37 acres. So I don't know why we would be going through this effort to create an oak savanna at this point in time. I did try to look through the 1833 Public Land Survey. And while a lot of that documentation is on the state's website, it's really, really hard to read. And I, I couldn't read through it. I, I didn't know if there was a better resource, but I also didn't have a lot of time to work on this. Many of the, and I, I do understand that under the state forestry management concept, many of the trees in this area and many of the other things that are growing there are considered invasive species. And I, I, you know, that's okay. I mean, we have invasive species all over Fitchburg, some people have them in their front lawns. There's, there's invasive species everywhere. This creates a, this particular park, this area that we're talking about, these areas two, three and four, it's a woodlot. And so there's gonna be, I don't know if it's even possible to completely eliminate all the invasives unless you do go in there with one fell swoop and, and pull everything out. And I, it just seems like that's, that's a monumental effort. And I don't know, uh, I don't know what the rationale is for attempting to do that there now. Is this going to be the plan for every woodlot that the city owns in the city of Fitchburg? I don't know. We haven't yet created that policy. We're just talking about this one particular area. Right now, it is used, the trails are used by people. And I would support spending some time going in and widening some of the trails and making it more user-friendly as a wooded trail area. I've, like I said, I've lived here a long time, I've walked through that park many times. I've walked down the, through the trails, I've gone through the whole, well, as much as you can without, without wandering too far off the trails. But I think it provides something that we don't. But I think it provides something that we don't really have anywhere else in the city with that kind of trail network that's existing right now. If this becomes an oak savanna, it's not going to be a woodlot anymore. It'll be an oak savanna, which is going to be mostly open space. And that will fundamentally change the character of what we have there. And it's not as if the invasive species are going to spread beyond the boundaries of where they are now, because this is pretty much completely surrounded by softball diamonds and a road and the neighboring, the, the people who live there. So I, I just don't see, I don't see this as being something that's going to continue to expand and take over new areas.
Jay, may I ask you to summarize your points so that the other alders on council can make comments as well?
I'm getting close. Something that was mentioned earlier by one of the speakers is.
Okay, can you summarize? So we have, I have plenty of other people on the list, and it's 9 o'clock, and we have a long agenda, okay?
I'm getting close.
Okay, go.
I realize, I realize having this kind of a discussion is something that you're not really thrilled with, but I think it's important to get these points out there.
Don't put words on my mouth that I didn't say, okay?
Well.
So, that's it.
So in the 202-page document, on page 142, Goal 3 is stated this way. "The city of Pittsburgh strives to be a good neighbor by minimizing the impacts of ecological restoration activities and public use to nearby properties." I said, since this is our stated goal in the management program, why are the neighboring property owners being completely disregarded in the pursuit of this plan? And the answer that I got back to my stunned amazement was, nothing could be further from the case. Well, that's clearly the case. The mayor mentioned earlier that we've received a lot of emails about this plan, and we have received a lot of emails about this plan. And I think, I don't, I didn't go through and count them all, but I think the mayor is correct that maybe half of them were in support of the plan and half of them are opposed. What wasn't mentioned is that of the ones in support, almost all of those came from committee members who have voted on this and worked on this and don't live anywhere near this park. And all of the opposition emails, well, not all of them, because there are some opposition emails from people who live farther away, but all of the opposition emails have come from people who live right around this park. So we have not considered them, and we have not done anything to address the concerns that they've brought up. And I think, given that, given all those things, I cannot vote in favor of this resolution tonight. I think it has not been vetted with the neighborhood very well. I think we need to go back to the drawing board and try to actually see if Goal 3 is something that we're serious about, and that's where I think it stands with me right now.
Okay, thank you. Nicole, and then Dave.
Thank you.
And then Bill.
I will try and keep my comments short so that my fellow alders can have some time to comment. First, I just want to comment, I know it's been brought up a couple of times, and I appreciate the concern about me being taken advantage of. I've been an elected member of boards for almost four years now. I'm a small business owner of, I manage teams of over 80 team members. I don't, I don't get taken advantage of. I know exactly what's happening. I was, I was the one to bring forward this resolution because I'm on the Tree Committee, right? This was my initial interest in the matter, and I asked Donald, because he's also an alder from an area that borders on, that, this is in District 3, right? So I have a critical thinking mind, you do not have to worry about me getting taken advantage of. Thank you so much for your concern. The second point I want to bring forward is that I think people here have brought up really good points about, they're not sure how this could be turned into a savanna, they're not, that's true, it's because we're not foresters, right? I'm not a forester. Anna Healy has over 30 years of experience. She's worked for the state, she's worked for our city, she has degrees in this. I, I don't think I've ever seen a person come so close to tears when talking about trees dying as I've seen Anna. And so we have a Parks Department filled with professionals and guided by policies. Does that mean they are not fallible? Absolutely not. We are human beings, we are all fallible. I just find it, I, I want to balance and just kind of call into this space that, yes, people are allowed to have opinions and allowed to question and think critically, which I appreciate to, to the top degree. And at the same time, I'm not a forester. I don't know of anybody else here who is a forester. And I think we need to be respectful of that piece. The third piece I want to bring up, the third of four pieces, I just have a couple more. The third piece I want to bring up is that the, as mentioned, this resolution was six years ago, brought up for a five-year pause. This is taking action on what was agreed to, and also I want to identify that no budget is being approved in this proposal. We approve a lot of policy and planning measures while saying that there's still a budget at the end of the day, right? We could have a lot of plans and a lot of effort, and budget could change year over year. We could have some budget one year. Anna also writes incredible amounts of grants to the state. She funds like half the trees that were planted in Pittsburgh off of money that is not taken from Pittsburgh taxpayers. So I just also want to speak that into this space. And if she has a grand plan to take down one bajillion trees, which again, I have a hard time believing, the, the budget has to balance. And no one up here is going to take the city into debt to, to drive that down. I think we've proved that with our Moody's rating increasing. And then the last piece that I want to bring up is, I appreciate so very much that we are a tree city, that we have amazing parks. It's my first introduction to Pittsburgh, playing frisbee on Stoner Prairie, playing frisbee on McGaw while my kids play in the baseball diamond. I think I've even messaged Scott to be like, hey, there's some glass on the baseball diamond. My kids were running around it like idiots. Just kidding, I love my kids. But the, it's a, it's a great community park, and that's exactly what it is. A free natural protection of your private property is not the priority of city parks and lands. I appreciate that, and I understand what the, the attention is and the benefits are of living by a park. The city park is not there for private property, right? There are expensive assets of our city, old historic oak trees that are dying because we are not managing invasive species. And I'm not here to argue invasive species, I think science proves to the damage that they do. We are losing expensive big trees, and we need to do something about it. But again, these are public lands, we have a right to our constituents, everyone all over the city who uses that, not just the land that butts up against private property. Thanks.
Next is Dave, and then Bill.
Let me brief. I'm not, I'm not a forester, but I play one on my, my free time. You know, I have extensive woodlot management. My family is a family of loggers, you know, sustainable, all the way back almost 400 years from my German ancestors. But I, I won't, don't want to get into that. Number one, I, I won't support a budget amendment that, big money to, to do this, okay? We just, it's irresponsible. But what I would say is, can be, if, if you choose to move ahead with this, it can be done, be with city, existing city staff, you know, we get our friends at the parks, getting, get up and running, large number of volunteers. And if it's, if it's deemed to be done, that's how, that's how it has to be done. If we're spending, it might be a small amount for initially some herbicides to treat stumps and, and some things like that. What I would offer, kind of a little bit of a, I'm reading the tea leaves here, listening a little bit, but maybe a staggered, you know, staggered approach. We have three, three woodlots to do, you know, and obviously, we can't do them all. And maybe stagger, and then the one closest to the residents, we do that last, we have a plan, one, one year, one another year, the one closest to the residents, maybe the last year, you know, that would be an option. It's not what they want, but I think that would be a reasonable compromise. And also, you know, there is another park, you know, that S. Johnson Park is, is their park too, you know? So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Bill?
So I guess Scott and/or Anna, if you could maybe take a minute to walk us through what this, what the implementation of this might look like. I understand this is, you know, maybe going to happen over 10 to 12 years. What is the inventory of desirable trees that are going to be left? What sort of percentage canopy can we expect at the end of all of this? And then, I guess specifically regarding the, you know, the stormwater runoff, I think it's, it's fairly common knowledge that grasses that you would typically find in a savanna are far better at retaining stormwater than, than thick tree roots. Anybody who's been in McGaw Park on the trails after a rain can attest that it's just a slick mess in there. And is there another area in the city, or perhaps the arboretum, that currently looks like what the final state of this might look like?
Who's going to go first?
It's Anna there.
I don't see.
Are you, are you there yet, Anna?
No, you, you, it's good. Oh, I'm not there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. So basically, if you want to know what this is going to look like, Area 1 is pretty much what the other areas would look like, or SC Johnson. And I believe we put a picture that Sue Easterday provided us on the staff memo of SC Johnson's, so you could get a sense of, of what it looks like. And in terms of the stormwater, you know, prairie plants, they have roots, you know, 12 feet deep, I mean, they're mostly, most of the biomass is underground. They are far superior, far, far superior for stormwater retention than anything that's invasive, anything that we're interested in taking out. So it's just that the whole stormwater situation is a red herring. Yeah, that's the photo from Sue. So that's, so that's what we're talking about. And some of those trees that you're looking at are some of the same trees that are in that 1937 air photo, that are in the 1975 air photo, they're in the 1976 air photo. So that's what we're kind of looking at, looking at retaining. And what was your other question, Bill?
Well, this is going to.
Interested in stormwater management, what this, what was your other?
Yeah, this will happen over a period of how long? And, and, you know, what, what might that look like along the way?
You know, so part of the, part of the issue, I think, that the neighbors had an issue with, the original plan was five years. To be perfectly honest, I think 12 is probably more realistic. And we can do most of this ourselves, because now we have a forestry mower. So, I mean, and it might be, it might be a little bit longer than that, I'm not really sure. I will say, though, the prairies that we have got established, I mean, it does not take 20 years to get that, those prairies established. The plants that we have planted in there, a lot of them were donated. In three years, they're, they're, they're going, they're going strong. So. Does that answer your question?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Who's next? Thank you, Anna. Gabriela, you have more questions?
Yeah, so I have a ton of respect for city staff in forestry. Anna Healy is like, I think she has like a master arborist certification, and one is one of like, only like five people in the state of Wisconsin that has it. I, I might be exaggerating, but I'm pretty sure that that's accurate. So we have a great forester, we have.
Yes, that is true.
Yes, yes, I knew it. I have a good memory. So we have a really outstanding forester, we have a Tree Advisory Committee that I literally has never met people that love trees more than that committee. So when people talk about this being deforestation, the Tree Advisory Committee supports this wholeheartedly, I got emails from them supporting it. They love trees. Like, this is overall a good, we're on the right path with this. Also got a great email that, that Jim mentioned with, from one of our RCC members, is a land manager for the Prairie Enthusiasts, and does this for his full-time job. And he talked about this, as Anna just mentioned, like, the stormwater retention on land that has native plants, those deep roots, is, is far superior to anything, far superior is like, almost like an underwhelming statement for it. It's, it's really good for stormwater management, it's great for native wildlife, actually encouraging that instead of choking them out. And it is beautiful in maybe a different way, but it is beautiful. And I do think that we, we want to move towards that. So I, and I've done some research on this myself, but I do trust our forester, I trust the people that, that have a lot of expertise in this regard. And I look forward to looking at what, how this implemented over time. I think maybe this could be a great committee of the whole topic in the future. Bring in someone from the arboretum to talk about what does Wisconsin native environments look like? What do, what do these restoration projects look like, just so that people can get a sense of what it is? And I hope we can get the neighbors to come out and see, be part of this process, so that you can see that it's, it's for the good of, of the whole community, and it's not going to be, it's going to be a good thing in the end. So, thank you, I support this.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, the other comment that I want to make is, you, Jay, has mentioned that even though this is not expanding, you know, the, you know, the condition in the park, but the invasive species are practically killing some of the healthy trees that they are there, that we need to protect. I was in the Tree Committee for many years, you know? I support tree, I love trees, so I, you know, when people say that we are trying to, to kill 5,000 trees, you know, believe me, this is, we are going to try to, to, you know, to, to prevent a more of the trees there, they are, you know, dying because they don't have the air to grow, or, or because of the invasion are, you know, killing them. So, I don't know. Can you tell us in what we, you know, how do you ambition this, working with your department, the department?
Yeah, sure. So depending on the outcome of the council action this evening, if this would approve direction to staff to go ahead and create the overall city forestry management guidelines for woodlots, how I would envision it proceeding is obviously working with city staff to develop the overall guidelines for forestry management related to our woodlots. I would also expect that there would be a consideration as to whether or not any updates are necessary to the McGaw Park plan specifically. For all I know, since the time that plan was created and written, some things have changed, and it might be appropriate to update that plan to better reflect what, what exists today. I also envision estimates as to what it would cost to maintain this, what the plan would be to implement the, the guidelines, not only citywide, but also at McGaw Park. Ultimately, if we do use city staff as time allows, it probably certainly is going to take, as long as Anna has mentioned, 10, 12, 15 years to appropriately carry out those guidelines, obviously with some operating cash from the operating budget each year to help with either removal or planting of new species that are native. I would also envision that once a plan is created, that there would be further conversation with common councils, so that you understand what that plan looks like. And that would also be an opportunity for the city to engage in the community, so that they were to be able to see what that plan actually looks like before it is implemented, in case there is something that needs to be reconsidered, or adjusted, or amended with what has been previously drawn up. This is not a situation, at least from my perspective and what I've seen, where staff is going to be rushing in to do any sort of management that has not been previously authorized in its woodlots. So this is something that needs to take, take its time to develop, it's going to ultimately take time to ensure that we're on the right path. And assuming we end up on the right path, it's going to take time to actually implement.
Thank you, Chad. And the other thing that, we are going to also continue looking for grant money. And today, we receive a good news, since Anna is here, that the Tree Forever and 1 million trees from Alliant Energy Initiative, that the city of Pittsburgh was awarded $5,000 for, you know, to, for tree planting. So, so that one is, you know, Anna, this was, Anna is continuing, is looking money for, for grant. So today, we receive this good news too. So, okay, congratulations, Anna, for that. Okay, so, okay, any other comment question before I, yes, Bill?
Yeah, I'm just thinking back to the Park Commission amendment. Yeah, I'm just thinking back to the park commission amendment on removing the, the whereas clause about planting the buffer. Scott and/or Anna, I'm not sure what you had envisioned for the, for the buffer there, but I am wondering what, you know, are there native grasses that are, that, that grow to sufficient height that you could just plant, you know, a tall decorative grass along that border that would be, you know, seven to 10 feet tall or something?
Yeah, I mean, we could, I mean, Indian grass gets that tall, big blue stem gets that tall, that wouldn't be an issue. You know, you know, the reason, as I have pointed out, the reason we have that whereas clause is to, to be considerate to the neighbors and to try and, you know, have less of an impact on them. I mean, yeah, we could, it, it could take a lot of different forms, I guess.
I'm just thinking that grass is a lot harder to kill than trees and shrubs quite often. And so if the, if the worry is-
That's true.
-that we're going to plant something there and then who's responsible for replacing any, any dead growth, you know, I've got, like I said, I've got some decorative grass at home and there, there's no killing that.
Okay. Okay, yes, yes, what it was, so the resolution that we, we are, we are going to vote is the one that is coming from the tree advisory committee, is that correct?
That's what was moved.
That's where the motion was made, yes.
So then park commission removed the buffer. So my question is, we are going to move forward with the resolution as approved by tree committees. I want to put an amendment to the resolution, this is your time.
I would like, I'd like council to vote on that amendment, you know, up or down.
I would second that.
Yeah, I, I move the, move the whereas, the whereas clause, you know, specifying the planting of a buffer.
So you're motioning to remove that clause consistent with the parks commission amendment?
That is correct, Chad.
Okay. So, yeah, is there a second?
I'll second that.
So we are removing?
That's, so now the vote is-
This is the park.
To determine if this is a-
Okay, 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 we are following the park commission, okay. Okay, discussion, all in favor of that?
Roll call requested.
Okay, roll call for the amendment.
Thank you, Mayor, this is voting on the amendment. Alder Allen?
No.
Alder Dancer Jr.?
Yes.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herps?
Aye.
Alder Jutser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Vafadari?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried, 7-1.
Okay, so now we are moving, I need approval of the, of the amended resolution. So we are doing roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Alder Allen?
No.
Alder Dancer Jr.?
Yes.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herps?
Aye.
Alder Jutser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Vafadari?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried, 6-2.
So the most, the resolution carries, okay. Thank you everyone for coming, thank you for the feedback. Okay, so now we are, where we are?
Administrator's report.
Okay.
All right, I'll keep it quick, we've got six items I just want to bring to your attention. The Fitchburg Senior Center in its Lunch and Learn series is hosting Stony, The Road Story, which is a look at Black history with community historians Betty Banks and Pia Kinney James. That'll be taking place on Wednesday, February 26th, from noon to 1:00 PM at the Senior Center. The Healthy Neighborhoods Grant Program application has closed. Staff has begun to review the applications that have been submitted, and I believe that there were approximately 17 applications submitted. Obviously, HNI, I'm sorry, Healthy Neighborhoods Committee will be ultimately involved in the grant process as well. The second neighborhood navigator position has been hired. That is a grant-funded position from Dane County that helps support the early childhood zone. And that early childhood zone, which originally had only included the Leopold School District, has now been expanded to include the entire city of Fitchburg, which does allow both of the navigators to now serve the entire city and not just specific neighborhoods. Yes, Alder Maldonado?
What is our new navigator's name?
It is Shifra Weingarten, and she lives in the allied Dunsmarsh-Belmar neighborhood. Next item is the fire department chief process. Applications are being reviewed and those who will be selected to move on in the process will participate further on March 5th and 6th. There will also be a planned public informational or reception the evening of March 6th. The Police and Fire Commission meets, I think, either this week or next week to finalize some of the details. And once we have the final details, in particular the location of that public event, we'll be sure to share that. In-person absentee voting for the February 18th primary continues. City Hall is available 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM through Thursday for that in-person absentee voting and 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Friday, the 14th. And then finally, February 18th on the primary, I want to just point out that there are no polling location changes. All polling locations have stayed the same as we know and that the polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Any questions?
Any question, comment?
I have an unrelated question to anything you just reported.
Sure.
We have that email address, council and mayor, does that include you and Adam and the city attorney?
I believe it includes Adam and I, but not the city attorney.
Okay. Is it, just as something for the future, you know, I know our IT staff is kind of busy, but it would be helpful, I think, not just to council members, but also to members of the public, if we had one email address for each committee that would just go to those committee members? Because right now, if you want to send, if I want to send an email to the Parks Commission, I've got to go to the website, look that page up, copy and paste all those, all seven of those email addresses. So if there was just a way that you could, that we could say Fitchburg Parks Commission and they would all get emailed directly, that would really be helpful, I think.
I can certainly look into that. I know Microsoft would charge, obviously, a licensing fee of some sort for each of those addresses, but I'll certainly look into it and see if we have funding available already for that, or it might be included in our current package, so to speak, with Microsoft. So I'll report back on that.
Great.
Any other question? Okay, mayor's report, so I want to be short. So Chad and myself, we met with the town of Verona and the city of Verona. We are continue working on the EMS AGI agreement. We are almost very close. We have our, I think our next meeting in March is going to be our last, and then it's going to go to our respective legal council for review. And then when it's approved, you will see the new agreement coming to the council, maybe, I don't know, after April, May, May?
I would guess April or May, maybe, depends on, obviously, if there's any notable concerns expressed or revisions needed.
And then with the police union contract, I think we are almost close to, you know, the, the police union is going to ratification, I would say soon. So, so that contract is as approved by the union, you will, we will be with us maybe in a couple of, one, two, one month, I would say, yeah.
Yeah, you could see a referral at the end of February.
February, yeah. So the other thing that we are working, we created an internal group to start working on the history work, you know, that you approved some of the funding in December, that one is coming along. The other thing that I decided to post for this year is the teen center phase three, we are going to hold for 2025 because, as you, as, you know, one of the, as I mentioned before, is we need to find how to fund the operational cost. I think Alder Maldonado is working with some partners to determine how we can fund that, but until we don't have the funding for that, I am not going to move forward with phase three. We are working also with some other option that we can do next year, like do a pilot or something similar while we are trying to, to work with some partner to, to see we can get the funding for the operational cost. The other thing that I am working is, I want to, I, I will have an, I'm thinking to have an intern in, for the mayor office, so we are working, I am working with HR. We have a job description ready to go. We are going to get credit for payment, no money, okay? So we are going to work with the UW Madison to see we can find some, you know, candidate that they want to, during the summer, they want to help me, you know, there is plenty of things that they can be helping to the mayor office, so we'll see what happens. This is the first time that we are doing that, it's a pilot too. The other thing that economic development is working is putting together a developer roundtable by May, maybe. So we are trying to do something here in Fitchburg, invite all our partners and developers and everyone related to the, you know, housing, to, you know, to have a candid conversation about our, our processes, how the city of Fitchburg can improve. So all of you are going to be invited. And the other thing that I'm going to put in, in action soon, in April, I will start with my first listening session in each district. I will start with District 3, so, and I hope work with the Alders in District 3 to put together this listening session. So I anticipate it, you know, most at the end of April. And then I will go with District 2, 4, and 1. So this is the plan. And finally, I want to congratulate Alder Gerhart for being selected one of the 40 under 40 business leader class of 2025. So she's going to appear in the in-business May issue, so, everyone, so, so this is going to be a reception on March 27th. So congratulations, Gabriela, you deserve this award, okay? Very proud of you, okay? Okay, that's it for me, any question, comments?
I have two questions.
Yes.
On the Fitchroona meeting, so my understanding is that at this juncture, we're just working on an agreement for 2026, is that correct?
So how we're currently discussing amongst the three municipalities is that the changes to the IGA would begin January 1, 2026. And then obviously, absent any change in the district or an update to the intergovernmental agreement, those changes would carry on.
So have we, has there been discussion on what moves forward after 2026? Like, are we going to still have a joint district or?
So, yes, for the, at least certainly in the short term, there, the IGA has language in regards to a municipality withdrawing and the length of notice that would need to be provided. And currently, under the existing IGA, a municipality has the ability to withdraw by giving notice within a calendar year, at any point during that calendar year. And then the following calendar year is their period of withdrawal and then they'd be out. So for instance, if December of 2025, under the current agreement, the city of Verona or town of Verona or city of Fitchburg indicated they were withdrawing, they would be out January 1 of 2027. Under the new IGA, we've updated that, we've actually increased the length of notice that is needed right now under the draft proposal that would provide a bit more time for municipalities to make any adjustments if there is a withdrawal. And we've also clarified some of the language so that it doesn't happen on a holiday, for instance, or a weekend.
But also, we are going to bring the dissolution, you know, to the council, an option.
Sure, so, so what we, I think what we envision is once the IGA comes forward, that there would be ideally a conversation with the common council if there was any direction provided to staff to look at other long-term EMS service options, or if you would prefer to just update the IGA at that point in time and not explore long-term EMS options.
All right, the other question is on the teen center. So my understanding was that Phase 3 was going to move us into understanding what the operational costs would be?
No, the Phase 3 is moving with the design and the construction.
Oh, okay.
They already provide that in Phase 2.
Okay, so we know how much money Joe needs to raise.
Big cost, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
What is, what is the operational cost as revealed?
Well, it varies, you know, there is, there were a couple of-
It was, it was presented at the Nets presentation in December, so, and it's an estimate, but the programming costs would be one thing and that would be something that would be assumed by the operator. And that could vary depending on what kind of programming takes place in the space. The estimated cost of kind of the maintenance of the building, right, like mowing the lawn, keeping the lights on, everything, would be about 170K per year. So right now, what I'm in the process of doing is exploring options and seeing, like, what kind of sustainable funding would, would cover a large amount of those costs.
Gotcha.
Okay. Okay, so now we are moving to Item 8, moving to commission committee report, Plan Commission.
We meet next week.
Okay, thank you. Then we're going to Boards of Public Works, and we have plenty, okay?
I'm over approval of resolution R. 1225 authorizing Dane County services for stormwater permit review and erosion control inspection in 2025.
Second.
And I have-
Public Works approved.
Okay, thank you.
Bennett's approved.
Resource Conservation Commission?
RCC approved.
Okay, so David Hayte, he wishes to speak, I don't know, in supporting opposition because I don't have the, you haven't, you forgot to check the box, okay?
So I want to give a shout out to Anna because she was a great help when we were doing the restoration work in the 16-acre Seminole Glen Environmental Corridor that for four years was a restored wetland complex that infiltrated 100% of the Seminole Forest watershed runoff. And so we, and I don't mention this because I expect, someone has to do it. So I personally have spent over 1,000 hours restoring the kettle. And because of the steep slopes and the fact that the woods is a forested wetland, all those buckthorns and honeysuckle had to be pulled by hand, well over 1,000 hours, much more than that. And my partner Joyce and I, we put in over $12,000 worth of plant materials. And that's the material cost, not accounting for the time to put it in. So I mention it because it may seem like I'm relentlessly negative, that's not the case at all. I am relentlessly realist because I've seen what was a 16-acre wet, restored wetland complex, which is the ultimate in green, right? It, wetland, wildlife, they had to stop traffic back in the early 2000s for the salamanders to get across the street, there were so many. And because there's not enough attention paid to these issues, right, it's something that happens over there, we don't pay much attention to it, things happen, right? I mean, how much time do you spend talking about Magaw Park Woods? How much time we spent talking about what actually happens in permitting? So permitting what happens? So, and Mr. Herps, Chairman Herps, he can correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that at some point, there was a system within the Board of Public Works, which is the, also the stormwater utility, that the best way of, that was decided the best way of operating was to delegate basically the responsibility to the city engineer. And that worked. And that worked, and I can't speak to the past. Well, things are a lot more complex now. And so the city engineer now has delegated it to the stormwater engineer. And what's happened is, is that that gets then delegated to the county person. And the city has delegated away all of its responsibility. So if the county person approves it, according to the, the language in Chapter 30, Ben or Tim have to sign it. There's no discretion. There's no watershed planning. And I sent out a document that's 60 pages, almost all pictures. I swear to God, it's no more than 300 words and lots of pictures. And so here we are, spending lots of money trying to somehow get in a position where we can approve the Greenfield neighborhood. But upstream is this massive amount of pollution that's coming down. Look at the pictures. The pictures don't lie. So here's what I'm suggesting with this. Any other project where you have something as consequential as the Clean Water Act, you get a presentation, you get a report, you get a recommendation for you to consider because you're responsible for compliance with the MS4 in the end. You're responsible for regulatory compliance of the Clean Water Act in the city. So table it, get a report, get a presentation. Let's have an open meeting so people can understand what's happening. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and thank you for, you know, for all your hours working in the kettle, okay?
It's my, it was my pleasure to do it.
No, thank you. Okay, so, so we, who is gonna, Dave, can you introduce a resolution or you want?
We already did.
No, I know, but can you explain what it's about?
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Tim.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll let Tim.
So the, the city has a contract with Dane County Land and Water Resources approved March 23rd, 2017 by Resolution R-35-17. The city utilizes these services for the compliance review of stormwater management and erosion control permits and inspection. The 2025 operating budget has allocated $35,000 for Dane County Erosion Control and Stormwater Management Review and Enforcement Services. Financial policy requires council approval for contracts exceeding $25,000. We're looking for council to authorize the payment to Dane County Land and Water Resources as outlined on the attached preapproval.
Okay, question, comment? Can you explain why we are doing this with, you know, with Dane County?
So the city's been doing it for a number of years with Dane County, and it's a pass-through expense, so any private development project that the Dane County reviews or inspects, it's, it's a pass-through to the developer, the fee gets charged to them. On city projects, we do end up paying for that, and we are looking internally to start to inspect that for city projects.
Okay. Any other question, comment? Here none, all those in favor of, huh?
Does this require a two-thirds vote?
No.
Okay.
All those in favor of Resolution R-12-25 say aye.
Aye.
Next.
The motion carried. Oh, he's gone.
I'll move approval of Resolution R-1825, acceptance of the Tower Hill Park Shelter renovation bids.
Second.
Public Works approved, and Parks Commission approved.
What about Finance?
And Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. What is it? Oh, okay, because this one has been amended in Board of Public Works and Parks. So, so we are moving forward, which one?
The, well, let me explain what, the, all the things, you know, that we are looking, you know, looking for were more than our budget. So Scott Haddam bid, bid with options. And so the, the base bid, certain amount include the roof, the redoing the inside, the restrooms, things like that. And then there were, there were some options. And one was lights around the outside, adding some windows in the brick walls, resurfacing the underside of the, of the canopy. And I believe both Public Works and, and the park approved the base bid. And then we, we set a priority. A, A, the exterior lights, we feel just to, for security or, or, you know, to have eyes on it a little bit. And we had the canopy underneath as a second option, and I believe, and this was, this was contingent on if, if there was available, available funds from TID to do those. It was beyond the, beyond what the base bid was. And so that was, that was a matter that went to Finance. And I don't know if they evaluated that or not.
To follow up on that, yeah, we did have a discussion about it. We didn't amend it because we just thought we should bring it to council for discussion, but I, I think, I'll just share my opinion, and I think this reflects the discussion. I think we should consider including that amendment to add some of these things back in, assuming there's funding. We have crazy interest rates right now, and we've made a lot of money on that TID, so there, there probably is available funding to add some of these things back in. I would also suggest that we perhaps consider having all of them be on the table for adding back in. I think that metal roofing system we discussed a little bit could save us in the long run by extending the life of the roof and potentially the life of the shelter. And so for $21,000, that could potentially be a very lucrative investment long-term. And just given where we are in terms of our, our finances, you'd be, if you look at those treasure reports, we're making a ton of money on interest right now, and we have an opportunity here, I think, to, to put together a nicer shelter.
Gabriella, when Sue Easterday and I went and looked at it again this weekend, and the underside, the canopy, that's the original, it's just brightly in good shape. It just, we, as we looked at it, a few boards were sagging that we, that we, that could be reattached, and we kind of felt that would be the lowest, maybe the lowest priority. We looked at the roof too. The roof, I don't know, maybe Chad knows if that's, it's an awful good shape, and it can't be the original roof from 70, 75.
Not with asphalt shingles, no way.
Yeah, so that, that roof's not in that bad shape. But I, I share your, I share your belief, you know, that you'd probably get twice the, the life, life out of that roof. So, then one other thought we had, I'm sorry to be rambling, but it's relatively expensive to cut into those brick walls and put windows, and we're not sure that adds much value. But we thought maybe it would add some value. The doors on each end we're replacing, to put the door with the safety, the safety glass on those so that, you know, there would be some, would be some light in there. So that was another thing we, we discussed. But again, ultimately up to council to, to add. But I, I feel the exterior lights would be, would be a good one to have, just so, you know, it stays lit up a little bit. And I think the roof probably makes sense paying for itself at two to, you know, usually get two to one life, life for that.
Okay, so what?
So what, what you have.
We want to add the lighting, what is the roof?
Should make an amendment to.
So I'd like to make an amendment to add to the base bid in this priority, the lighting, the lighting, the roof, and then doors, doors with windows, safety glass in them if, if the budget would, would sustain it.
Second.
Okay, can you repeat again?
If I may clarify. Public Works had added in the, the refinishing of the wood. Are you also including that in your estate?
No, I'm not. I don't, I don't feel, you know, looking at it, I, if there's budget, we could do it. I, I don't think it's necessary, though.
But they said they're gonna redo the whole thing.
So I, I can comment on budget based upon what was discussed at Finance. What Misty had mentioned is that there is adequate funding within the TID closure account, largely due to the interest income that's been there. All of the projects that were identified for funding in the ARPA-TID investment plan, there is funding available for those. They, it exists. So we could use the additional interest income that has come in for those funds to fund all four of these deducts if the council wanted to. Obviously, you can certainly prioritize them in any way, shape, or form that you wish. But obviously, the other point to utilizing what is currently available in the TID funding is, at some point, it does run out. So if there are other projects that the council may wish to consider with that money that have yet to be identified, or you will also see one later this evening, that another park project here and a couple of agenda items that does not have enough adequate funding to fully implement the, the plan there either. So, but the bottom line is, is funding does exist if you wish to, to amend this.
Jim? Yes?
Yeah, for more discussion in Finance and what Gabriella was saying, I mean, we have the money right now, we're making good money on the interest rates. And I don't like to spend money just to spend money, but I think while we have it, might as well put it to a good condition that, you know, so we don't have to come back to it again. So I would like to have all the deducts in there.
And I think this is a very well-used park shelter. There is, you know, in summertime, it's Saturday and Sunday, and Friday is busy with parties, events, so, you know, and so.
Would you accept a friendly amendment to add the, the exterior finish as a, as a fourth option?
Yes, I would.
Dave, the, the metal roof system, is that going over the entire shelter, including the canopy?
Yeah, I believe it would be.
So has there been, has it leaked?
No, not, not that, well, I'm, I'm not aware that it has. You know, the shingles look in good condition right now.
My concern is, a lot of times when you do a roof replacement, you find dry rot, you find roof decking that's not in good condition, and you end up having to replace that also.
We would find that, Jay, I think even, as we were, we were gonna, we were gonna put asphalt shingles anyway. That was, you know, that was in the base bid to, to do asphalt shingle replacement. So if there is, is dry rot, we would find that either way, whether we're putting new shingles or.
Right, but it's, that's gonna add to the cost, I presume.
If we, if we find, yeah, if we find a problem.
All right. Well, I think, you know, when we were originally talking about this project, we were talking about scraping the building and putting up a whole new one. This is a freaking bargain.
I agree.
So I think we should do this.
It's in good, it's in good shape for a building built in 75, you know.
Okay, what is the amendment on the floor, Gabriela?
It's to add back all four elements with a, with a hierarchy. But it looks like we might be able to add them all back in potentially, if staff assumes that that's possible. I do have one question about the security lighting. Is that gonna be disruptive to the neighbors and the, at all? I guess I don't quite understand what a security lighting looks like, and are we gonna, is that gonna be in people's windows, like?
It's a good question, Gabriella. I don't have the, I don't have the answer. I assume it would point at the, would point at the building. I'll let Scott answer that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. If you're familiar with the, with the, with the shelter, there's an access walk that goes from the street to the, to the shelter. There's actually looking, we're looking to have a security, it's, it's like a yard light, similar to what we placed at Hugo Jamestown, which will splash some light that'll be adjacent to that path. Along with, there's another path that goes from the shelter to the playground. There's another location for another low-level security light, typical, similar to what we did at Hugo Jamestown Park. So it's, it's really just kind of a splash of light with a little additional security.
I, I presume all these lights will be dark sky compliant, right?
After we approve the resolution tonight, the ordinance.
Certainly, we look at that. I do think that in certain applications, it may not be feasible for what the task at hand is necessary. In this particular case, maybe that's not a big deal as far as to be able to accomplish that. But when we look at things like streetlights, for instance, where the light needs to be more broadly cast, it becomes more problematic.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor, and we need two-thirds of the vote, so we need to do a roll call.
If I may, actually, you're gonna vote to amend the resolution first, which doesn't need two-thirds?
Oh, no? Okay.
No, that just needs simple majority.
Okay, simple, okay. So all those in favor of the amending the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carried. So now.
If I may.
Yeah.
So when you vote, what I would also like to include is, obviously, staff will update the resolution to reflect the appropriate dollar amounts. So in effect, you would be authorizing staff to modify that resolution to, again, reflect the additional $78,000 that would be needed to include all of this. So when you look at the dollar amounts in the resolution, we would simply add the necessary dollar amount to that before it's signed by the mayor.
Okay, so, so all those in favor, yeah, I need a, oh, I need a two-third, so, for this, to amend the original resolution. As amended?
Yeah. As amended.
To a vote as amended, yeah. Okay. It's late, 10 o'clock.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Dancer Jr. is six percent. Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jeter?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Baffodari?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next one.
Move approval of Resolution R-1925, acceptance of McKee Park Shelter exterior renovation bids.
Second.
Public Works approved, and Parks, and Parks approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
So we're putting the exterior boards on there, have, have reached in their lives. We're gonna replace those with the Georgia Pacific kind of manufactured board that has a longer, has a longer lifetime, a stable, stable product that I, I'm not anticipating, certainly in my lifetime, that we'll ever have to worry about redoing the exterior of that, that shelter.
Okay, any question, comment?
Is, is that another, is that another wood siding, wood-based siding?
It's a, yeah, Jay, they, they chip up aspen trees. It's made in Tomahawk, Wisconsin. They chip up aspen trees and pressure treat it and antifungals and epoxy. It's, it's a nice, it's a, it's a very nice product.
Did we look at going with some kind of concrete board or?
Scott?
This is similar to the other new, newer park shelters that we, that we built. So no, we didn't consider those other, other materials.
Okay, any other question, comment? Here none, all those in favor of Resolution R-19-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
Move approval of Resolution R-2025, acceptance of McKee Park Pickleball Court bids.
Second.
Public Works approved with an amendment.
Okay.
And Parks, I believe Parks just approved as, as is.
Finance approved, as is.
Okay, so what is this, Dave?
So Public Works, we, we took out the $35,000 for a shade structure. We didn't feel that was really necessary. You know, you could walk over to the shelter, or you're playing, you're playing outside. We, we thought $35,000 could have been used at one of our other, another park in the neighborhood, and you could make better use of that, of those dollars. It's not, not a very big shelter. And we also talked about, if any of you, I think some of you, if you've spent time at kids' sports tournaments and things, which, you know, might happen, pickleball, people bring their own canopies to, to be under just to, to relax. So we, we didn't feel that was, that was necessary.
Okay, I have a question because I, you know, we are trying to make this, this pickleball court more like a regional place where people can come, a tournament. And I think, I have played pickleball in the summer there, and there are, there is no tree close by, and the, the shelter that is there in the Maga Park is kind of far away. So I think if we are gonna invest in doing this one, more like a regional place to attract more people to play pickleball, I think we need to add the shelters. You know, this is my personal opinion. Gabriela?
I would be inclined to keep the shade structure, and the reason why is because we can utilize those park improvement fees from the developers. The frustrating thing about those fees is that it can only be used for new park facilities. And because this is a new facility, we can utilize those funds. I do think the pickleball community would be great for them to, you know, invest in this park, but we, we really could use it for the repairs that are coming, you know, in the future that we can't use park fees for, which is why I think that, because it's not tax parity. you know, in the future that we can't use park fees for, which is why I think that, because it's not tax pay dollars, because it's coming from the developers, I, I think it's a, a potentially good use of that money.
We felt this might be a good opportunity for the, for the pickleball community to fund, fund that, fund the shade structure, and if they felt that was, you know, necessary.
Alder Gerhart, is what you're saying is that funding that would be independently raised could be used towards those things that park fees can't pay for? Is that what I'm hearing?
Long-term, that would be what I would think. I, I just like, we just have very fewer things that we can use those park fees for in a very frustrating way.
Yeah.
I would, I would, I would agree with Alder Gerhart, then.
Okay, any other comment, question? So the, the, the resolution on the floor is with everything?
No, no. Resolution on the board, Public Works passed with an amendment, you know, removing the shade structure.
Oh, so we are moving that one, okay, so we need to have an amendment.
Before you go to the vote, I just want to ensure that the common council is aware that the funding that was available for this project does get us everything with the exception of the lights. The lights were approximately $140,000 over the budgeted amount. We do intend to include within the budget the infrastructure to make those lights happen in the future. So there will be wiring installed and the footings installed for those light poles. But ultimately, at this point in time, unless the common council would like to consider adding them in the future, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that the lights are not included in this part of the project.
Thank you, Chad.
I'll make a motion to amend to add the shade structure back into the plan.
Second.
Any comments?
Jim?
Yeah, finance, I just brought up that, you know, how much skin does the pickleball association have in this? Because, I mean, it seems like every time we do something, the pickleball association comes up. And if we're not gonna, I understand using the park fees, but I think we should let them know that they have to have some skin in this game, too. You know, because they're using it as marketing or whatever, and if we're gonna ask other organizations, like when we do something, okay, you gotta chip in. And I think the same gotta go for the pickleball association, too.
Oh, yeah. And also, you receive a letter from Angela, from the Pittsburgh Chamber of Commerce, and I think also we can partner with the chamber, too, to, to raise some additional funds.
Two, two questions to, and maybe Chad's gonna address it, but, one, have, have they done any fundraising? And two, is there a way to ensure kind of what Alder Wheeler is asking for? Or is that just kind of a good faith effort that they would need to put down?
Sure, so, I'm not aware of any fundraising they've done to date. I do know that in the email that was sent to the common council from Angela at the chamber, that she had an attachment in there that indicated the number of hours that the pickleball association has donated in-kind to the facility, which also included, I think, approximately 9,000 players in the last year at various times throughout the, the playing season in which the, the pickleball association members were present. I know in conversations with Scott Endo, our Parks Director, that he has at least informally mentioned to the pickleball association that, you know, we would certainly welcome their participation, not only in, in-kind donations, but perhaps as well financially on, on this particular amenity in our community. So the conversation has at least begun on an informal basis?
Yeah, here is, you know, you know, all the information about. What is Kappa? I don't know.
I would just add, you know, none of our tennis courts have a shade structure on them. You know, we, we, we brought that up, you know, we spent a million dollars on, on, you know, redoing the tennis court in McKee.
Yeah, McKee has one.
There's no shade structure.
McKee has one, yeah.
There's a shelter there.
Yeah, there is an open shelter, yeah.
Now, the other, other carts, maybe that one, other ones, we don't have anything.
But remember, Dave, we are trying to create a regional place.
Well, I'd like, you know, most of our residents don't play pickleball, and I'm just looking out for them, that's all.
Really? I will be surprised with that comment. Okay, so, so what we have on the floor, Gabriela, is an amendment?
An amendment to add the shade structure back in.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so now we, and all those in favor of the-
Hang on a second.
The resolution as amended.
What?
So, I'm not clear. We're not doing the lights, we're putting in pylons for lights to be attached to at some point. You said that the light, the lighting came in at $140,000 over the budget? So we had $210,000 in the budget, and the lighting came in at $360,000?
No, my understanding is, is that while we had approximately $410,000 budget for this, broken down between the court expansion at 200 and Magoo Lights at 210, that a portion of the, what the funding that was set aside for the lights is actually going to go to the court's expansion, because that is also over the $200,000?
I see.
Jay, we had to do some stormwater, where the court expansion is, where the stormwater is, we had to spend some money on the stormwater facility there. You know, just had to do it, so that, if we wanted, we probably would have had the money for the lights, but couldn't do the court unless we improved that.
Okay, all, we need, where we are? We don't need two-thirds for this one, no, no. So all those in favor of the resolution as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, next one.
Move approval of Resolution R-2325, accepting an agreement for engineering services for SAEEN interceptor Phase II.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
So this is required to service the Hartong, Hartong property, and this is for the engineering, you know, the, to, to engineer, engineer this. And if Tim's still on, anything else he wants to add? I believe it was 28 or 30 feet deep is, will be how deep this is.
So along with the design, they'll also be updating the design report, design study report, and then also it'll be for the construction administrative services. So the total fee is $198,345.
Okay, any other question, comment?
Yeah, how far south of Lacy Road is this gonna be going?
Quarter mile? No, not that far.
There, there's a map included just above the resolution in the packet, so you'll see, it goes to the south property line of Hartong Brothers.
Well, their property line goes right to Lacy Road, doesn't it?
Here's the map, hold it up.
Oh, it's over there.
I think it's coming, isn't it?
It's over there, but it's not over.
It's coming, they're trying to do it.
Oh.
It's thick.
Oh, it's back there, okay. There we go, thank you, Scott.
Okay.
So, this is gonna pass under, I guess it's now called Haight Farm, this is gonna pass under Lacy Road? Over the-
Correct.
Over the part of Lacy Road that was just reconstructed, right?
No.
Yeah, I think, I think it's right by the railroad tracks, isn't it?
No, this is, if I'm looking at the red line correctly, it's east of that, so it's under the old section of Haight Farm Road.
Going under Haight Farm Road.
Correct.
I see.
Okay.
Okay, any additional question, comment? Here none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
Move approval of Resolution R-2425, authorizing acceptance of the plow truck equipment bid for three plow trucks.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Did finance approve?
Finance approved.
What is this?
So we've been having delivery problems, I'll let Tim elaborate on that for us.
Yes, so the, the city's purchased three chassis. One of the chassis have, has been manufactured, the other two are anticipated to be complete this spring. So this resolution's for the, to purchase the plow, the box, the plow wing, the salter, and the pre-wet system for all three chassis. And there's a two-thirds budget amendment needed for this.
Okay, any question, comment?
Do we really need a snowplow? I'm just kidding, no questions.
Tomorrow we do.
Tomorrow, yeah, mañana.
Okay, we need two-thirds of the vote, so this is, we need to do roll call.
Thank you, Mayor, Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jeter?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Baffedari?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, next one.
R-3025, amending 2025 Capital Projects Fund and General Fund Budgets, Public Works LTE Engineer.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you, what is this?
So this is essentially Paul Woodard has been working with us on the police, police station, helping with that, and the city hall remodel that will occur, and so we are adding that, adding this position. I forget exactly how many hours, Tim, we had in there, but this is a, I would just add, it's, it's a very good deal for the city.
Okay, any question, comments? Okay, we need two-thirds of the vote, so, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jeter?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Baffedari?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, okay. I think we are done with Public Works, and then we move to Park Commission.
I think I have to report, you know, the projects that we discussed, the parks, were resolutions tonight, so.
Okay.
Don't have anything else to add.
Thank you, Library Board?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Commission of Aging Well, done, and it's not here, but there are some plenty of activity this month. And then we move to Resource Conservation Commission.
I will move approval of ordinance, 2024-0-37, creating an outdoor lighting regulation by creating Chapter 28 of Pittsburgh General Code of Ordinances, and I'd like to move to approve as amended by the Plan Commission.
Second.
RCC approved.
Public Works Deadlocked 2-2.
Plan Commission approved with the amendment.
And Sida approved, isn't it? Yes. Okay.
And just to clarify, the amendment by the Plan Commission was to replace the phrase "manifest injustice" with the phrase "unreasonable hardship," subject to review by the city attorney.
And she's okay.
We have an attorney on the, on the Plan Commission, so.
So, okay, any question, comments?
What's wrong with manifest injustice?
We had a long discussion about it. It's a, it's a thing that the attorneys care about, that maybe others don't, so.
Ben is with here, with us online, so if we have question, I don't know, Ben, do you want to add anything else to this ordinance?
Um, you know, if there's, I, I'd really just be happy to answer questions. Yeah, I, I mean, I guess I can just give a brief summary. Basically, this is kind of a, a first step, I would, I would say, or putting in some more practical lighting standards that are found in many of the other neighboring communities and, you know, across the state. But essentially, here, this would be any ADR project, there's gonna be some standards for light trespass, how much light can basically spill off their site onto adjacent properties, and then requiring full cutoff lighting, and then some certain more specific standards for lighting of the parking lot, essentially how bright things can be. So that's kind of the, the, the quick and dirty summary of it, and I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that, that may come up.
Okay, thank you. Any, okay, we have to, Nicole first, and then you, Jay.
Nicole? I just have a quick question. Why was Board of Public Works Deadlocked? Can you kind of speak to that, Dave, in terms of what the hesitations were?
Yeah, I, I think I can, you know, the enforcement, creating another thing for the city to enforce, neighbors against neighbors, that, that's kind of where it, it fell.
So the practicality of enforcement and the additional staff to do so.
Yeah.
Any other, Jay?
Yeah. It seems that when we buy, right now, we've been having discussion, some discussion about streetlights as they go in. And it seems like most of the street, the new streetlights we install are already zero cutoff fixtures. So why did we exempt public streetlights from the zero cutoff requirement? Ben, you want me to take this?
I, I can, yeah, I can answer that, so that's a great question. So, you know, when you have something like street lighting, that's 100% public safety. And if you, and in some cases, it may be appropriate to put in full cutoff fixture lighting, but in certain instances, depending on road geometrics, it, it may be more desirable to let some of that light spill a little bit wider out, which a full cutoff could potentially prevent. So it, it has to do kind of more so with the way that the light is spread from the luminaire, and, and there may be some instances where a full cutoff light wouldn't quite fit with, with kind of the design standards that you'd be looking at for, for having a safe roadway for people to travel on at, at night. That's essentially what it comes down to, is, is, you could be in a situation where you'd have to install potentially more lights. It could get more expensive. So those are kind of the, the main reasons. It's, it's a little bit of a different beast when it comes to the, the transportation lighting.
I would also add that staff discussed the fact that existing streetlights that may not be full cutoff, we have a stock of those, or may need to replace those with the exact same fixture if one gets knocked over. So it could be difficult to potentially comply with the ordinance based upon replacement of an existing streetlight. And then the other thing is that if there are ever any supply chain considerations related to a full cutoff light, we need to have the flexibility so that we could quickly replace light if needed.
Jim?
You know, Dave brought up a question about enforcement, it got me thinking. Chad, wouldn't this be enforced by building inspection? I mean, as they talk about foot candles and all this other kind of stuff.
So yes, it very well could be enforced by building inspection and/or planning and zoning. As Ben mentioned, this is intended to focus on new developments through the architectural design review process. One of the main considerations we did have is that it would be very difficult, obviously, to go back and hold existing lighting accountable to this standard, so we needed to focus on, on new projects.
Any other question, Bill?
I guess I would also like to make a, a motion to amend as per the RCC, which removed from the list of exemptions one and two family dwellings.
Second.
Like, is that just everyone in a single-family home?
And duplexes, I guess.
So we're making the majority of our housing stock exempt from this regulation?
Correct. Staff discussed this specifically and deliberately exempted single-family and two-family homes, largely because of staff capacity, and in creating a potential enforcement problem, also neighbor versus neighbor, and sucking the city into those sorts of situations. Also, it would increase staff time to review building permits associated with single-family and two-family. Building inspection staff reviews those, where the architectural design review is oftentimes reviewed by Public Works, or I'm sorry, by planning and zoning. And I was also informed that it would likely increase the cost of building permits associated with single-family- permits associated with single-family and two-family homes because of the additional review time.
Okay, so what we have on the floor is the ordinance as amended by Plan Commission.
As well as the RCC, it was, it received a second.
Okay, so.
Could we vote on those amendments separately?
Oh, my lord. Okay, um.
The Plan Commission amendment was included in the.
In the original.
In the original.
Okay, okay. Can we, can we vote on the RCC amendment then?
Okay, okay, let's, okay, all those in favor of amending the ordinance, um, say aye.
Aye. Which amendments?
Sorry. Can we be more specific? Removing single, one and two-family homes.
No, no, you're not removing.
So you're adding them.
Adding, sorry.
So, yeah, let's be clear that the RCC amendment.
Removing it from the exemption.
Exactly, removing it from the exemption, and staff specifically excluded it.
Exactly.
If, if I vote yes on this, to remove from the exemptions.
Yeah.
That means I put every single and two-family home under this.
Yes.
So if you don't like that, you should vote no on this.
Exactly.
Okay, just to clarify. Thank you. Please call for a vote again.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you call for roll call?
No.
No, sorry. I just said, can you call for a vote again? Because I don't know that everyone realized what that was.
So now everyone.
I, I guess, um, just to be clear, the, the, I, the feeling with RCC was we could have recommended lighting that would be safe and, and wouldn't require building inspection if used in all new developments. And I guess the other feeling is that if there's an ordinance, the majority of people are going to follow it, um, rather than flouting the law. Um, and I guess I would, I'd maybe like to hear Ben, uh, say a few words in addition to, you know, what Chad was saying about additional time and, and expense.
Yeah, that, sure, I mean, it's, um, certainly, there's, there's, uh, quite a few single-family homes and duplexes being constructed. Um, uh, no, no doubt that it would, you know, add, add staff time. Um, it, something would probably, you know, get dropped, um, in order to, uh, designate, you know, the time needed to review, um, each single-family, um, and two-family home. Now, I don't want to speak, um, for building inspection because they would ultimately be the ones, um, reviewing it. Um, but, uh, you know, tho- those are essentially the reasons that, uh, that staff included this as an exempt lighting, uh, in the first place, is, you know, just restating what, what Chad said, um, uh, just the, the additional, uh, time that it would take for the, the number of homes. But, um, uh, certainly, I'm, I'm, you know, confident that it, 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 uh, could be done to, to some extent.
Okay, any other comments? Question? No? So all those in favor of the ordinance as amended?
By RCC.
By RCC.
The amendment.
The amendment.
The amendment, yes. All, so you know what I'm saying. All those in favor of the amendment to the ordinance, say aye.
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 How many people are?
Roll call.
Yeah.
Let's do roll call. Sorry. I need to go home.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a roll call on the amendment.
Okay.
Alder Allen.
Aye.
Ald, uh, Alder Gerhardt.
Nay.
Alder Herbs.
Nay.
Alder Jettser.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Nay.
Alder Vafadari.
Nay.
Alder Wheeler.
Nay.
Motion failed.
Okay, the motion failed, so now we are, we have on the floor the original ordinance as amended by Plan Commission. All those in favor of the ordinance as amended by Plan Commission, say aye.
Before, before we do that, I would like to make an amendment and remove the, um, the right-of-way lighting, including public streetlights, from the exemptions. So I'll make that motion.
Okay, can you repeat again?
To remove item nine, right-of-way lighting, including public streetlights.
Okay, do we have a second? Here, no?
Can I get a second, just so we can talk about it for a second?
No, they don't want to talk. They say, well, they have no second. So, okay, um, so I'm sorry, but, you know.
Well.
Do you want to say something?
I do. This is, this is one of those things where we, we are telling everybody else what they can do, but we're exempting ourselves from it as a governmental body. And that philosophy just has never sit well with me. If we feel like everyone else needs to comply with this ordinance, then why would the city exempt itself from it?
I have a question about that. What about all the new neighborhood that we have to build? Can we request that those, the streetlights for all this new neighborhood follow this ordinance?
We will certainly do what we can, but to Ben's earlier point on the street lighting side of things, there are certain situations where it may not be practical for public safety or traffic safety reasons to have full cutoff lights. And, uh, Ben, if you could remind me if, uh, I recall correctly during the staff conversation on this, uh, every single ordinance, or nearly every signal ordinance, si- single ordinance you looked at from other municipalities had an exemption for things like streetlights?
Yeah, that, that was fairly, uh, common, um, in, in the ordinance that, in the ordinances that we looked at, correct?
So practically, we cannot do it because it's a safety issue. This is how, how I understood.
Okay, I'd like to call the question.
That, that one was a good, you know, it's a good, you know, thing to think about. I don't know. Okay, so, um, so where are we at now?
We're the main, main motion.
No, second, okay. So we are on the main, um, ordinance, okay? Um, as amended by Plan Commission. Okay, so we are going to do roll call. Sorry, but, you know, because I want to be sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt.
Aye.
Alder Herbs.
Aye.
Alder Jettser.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Vafadari.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Okay, next, we move to Transportation and Transit Commission.
We meet next on Thursday.
Uh, Community and Economic Development Authority.
We have, we will be meeting in a couple of weeks, I think.
But did you meet before?
Not, not since, not since the last council meeting.
Uh, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee.
I, excuse me, I'm not aware of the next time we meet. We haven't met since.
I think in next week, isn't it? I don't know.
Thanks.
Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission.
Uh, we met last week mainly just to make updates to the Bike and Pet Plan. Um, we're checking in with our council president to see if there's room in the February COW for a brief presentation by the Bike Committee. So as soon as we hear back, uh, from city staff and, uh, Alder Gerhardt, uh, we can know whether or not that'll be an option.
Okay. Thank you. EMS.
Next meeting is February twentieth, six P.M. at the Verona Fire Station.
Thank you. Healthy Neighborhood Committee.
Yeah, we are, uh, we have our, uh, applications in now. Uh, there's a lot of them. We, so we have a, we have a bit of a conundrum because, um, we have a lot less money this year than we had last year.
No, 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 no. I checked with Deanna, and we have around one hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. Because I added fifty thousand dollars additional, like coming from the ARP.
Well, fine then.
Yeah.
Because she, she told us at the meeting last week that we only had seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, but then, because I was watching your meeting, and then I sent an email, and she confirmed with Misty. I want to send you that email.
Great.
Yeah.
That's perfect then. Um, because we were considering whether, you know, if we ended up with sixteen or seventeen, um, uh, applications, whether we'd be able to fund them all, so, um, maybe we can. We'll just, we'll have to go through the applications.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay. Yeah, I want to send you that email, Jay. Landmark and Preservation Commission, no report.
Housing Advisory.
Oh, Housing Advisory, sorry.
Uh, we met yesterday, and we had a, a good presentation from the Madison Area Community Land Trust, um, which would be interesting if you want to find out more about what they're doing. They have sixty-two units, um, in the land trust. They're only in the city of Madison right now, um, and that's, that was since they were founded in nineteen ninety-one. And the basic overview is that the land trust owns the land, and then the homeowner owns just the building. So it reduces the cost of the home, the mortgage for the homeowner upwards of a hundred thousand dollars, because it's, because you're not owning the land itself. And then that home stays permanently affordable because the homeowner is required to give the land trust the first option of right of refusal on buying it back. And if they do sell it, they have to sell it to somebody that meets the criteria that the person that bought it meets, which is a low income, uh, or, or low to moderate income, and a few other different, uh, criteria. So it stays affordable in perpetuity. Um, and, yeah, they serve thirty to sixty percent, oh, sorry, thirty to eighty percent of area median income families. And, uh, again, they are looking, they got two million from Dane County to, um, expand, fifty percent of that has to be used outside of the city of Madison. Um, and I guess fifty percent, I, I think it has to be families between thirty and fifty percent of AMI, so on the lower end of that scale. So they are looking to, to expand, and obviously interested in potentially working in Pittsburgh. So that's on the table for, um, in terms of bringing affordable housing options here. Um, one of the, I think the complications would be property tax calculations. They work pretty closely with the Madison Assessor on making sure that they, they're not being assessed for the value of the land and the home, because of, then the homeowner would be paying for higher taxes than what their mortgage is reflecting, so, um, anyway, that's the basics. Um, but it's, it's a really interesting presentation, if you want to check it out. Uh, the mayor came to speak about, um, her housing priorities for the coming year. And then we looked at the, uh, Resolution R twenty-five twenty-five, which is going to come back in March, I believe. It's a contract with Sustained Dane for the implementation of that Efficiency Navigator Program, Part One of Two. Um, so it's the first round of projects, so we'll see that very soon. The committee did pass that. And then we got, got a report from the Department, um, and they talked about their current efforts, which are extensive. Um, but I, I think a lot of the, we've had discussions about before, but, um, we are hoping to have a more in-depth discussion about the Gorman Company proposal that was brought up during the committee of the whole, um, in the near future. And there's a lot of activity happening, um, with an economic development and with housing, so lots more to come. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Landmark?
Uh, no report.
And then, um, no, no report for the Ad-Hoc Community and Equity Committee, Donna is not here.
Three advisory committee.
Where is three?
Is after landmark.
Oh, you have anything else to say?
No, I really don't, other than we're meeting. Sorry, we're meeting on Thursday at four P.M. And to update, Ag and Rural Affairs does meet next week on the eighteenth at four P.M.
Okay, thank you, Nicole, sorry. Uh, so then we move to standing committees and report, committee reports, so we start with Finance Committee and Gabriela.
I'll start with the resolutions. I move approval of Resolution R twenty-seven twenty-five, amending the twenty-twenty-four General Fund Budget Fire Department repairs.
Second.
Okay, Chief, you're here.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm not going to explain.
No, no problem.
I told you, you need to come. It's almost eleven o'clock.
Um, at the end of last year, the fire department, um, at both Firehouse Two and Firehouse Three, had a number of garage door repairs in which we exceeded our repair and maintenance supply account, um, totaling just over five thousand one hundred dollars. To cover this difference, I'd like to request an internal budget amendment, um, of five thousand one hundred seventy dollars from our, uh, uniforms account to our repair and maintenance supplies. Please.
So this is just an account transfer, yeah?
Yes.
Cool.
Any other question? Jay?
Yeah, what, what's happening with the door? Which doors are these? Are these the overhead doors or the front ones?
Both.
And what's happening that's causing these excessive repairs?
Well, um, they, in need of maintenance, um, both, uh, firehouses, one's, uh, going to be five years old, the other one's seven years old, so, um, we never really had annual maintenance done on them. It wasn't ever budgeted. Um, so this year, we're going to start doing that. Um, so a number of things was the bi-fold doors in the front. Um, one actually had received some water in by the control panel and frayed the control panel, so we had to get that replaced. And then another one, we, um, had to have a motor replaced, and we were able to put, take parts from three other doors, um, to make that work. Um, and then the overhead doors on each firehouse, just opening and closing over time, the cables are fraying faster than we thought. Those doors are very heavy. Um, we do have, uh, it's always, over at Firehouse Two, we've always had an issue with how the doors, um, the tracks were put in, because it puts a lot of weight on the door when it's open, um, just at the angle that track is. So we're working with another door installer to see if we can resolve that, but until then, it's, it's causing those cables to fray a lot faster than we expected. Plus, we also put in some safety components on those overhead doors at both firehouses, or at Firehouse Two right now, and we're working on Firehouse Three, because we did have one go down forcefully earlier last year, in which we filed an insurance claim on and, and covered a portion of it. Um, but once again, when they were installed, the, the safety devices were never put on there to slow the ascent of that door, so we're currently doing that now, too.
And I suppose it's old enough, you can't really go back to the installer on a warranty claim.
Correct.
Yeah, that's great.
So, and, yeah, so that's, you know, that's why the budget amendment has been requested.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Uh, all those in favor of Resolution R dash twenty-seven dash twenty-five, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move approval of Resolution R twenty-nine twenty-five, amending the twenty-twenty-four Capital Projects Fund and TID number ten fund budgets, reallocation of twenty-twenty-A and twenty-twenty-one-A debt proceeds.
Second.
I'll, uh, do a, oh, Finance did approve this.
Misty's here, yeah.
Yeah, I can just do a quick summary, but Misty can jump in. So, um, the memo was pretty good, but basically, we are moving some money around so that we can close out the twenty-twenty-A bond. Um, for the twenty-twenty-one-A bond, it's a little more complex. Um, we, she wanted to, uh, give us a preview that we are getting a lot of interest money from, um, the high interest rates, and so we are likely to have to have an arbitrage payment in the future, um, because of those high interest rates. We expect to spend the, this by the end of twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five, and then we can take a look at what that arbitrage payment is at that point. Um, the twenty-twenty-four, and, and just also a note, generally, we've done bonds in the past. Our twenty-twenty-four debt issuance was a note, which is similar to a bond, but has more flexibility. We can now issue notes for twenty years, so we'll probably be doing that in the future so we can, um, avoid situations like this, where we're having to switch things around in order to close out a bond. Anything I missed, Misty?
You did great, thank you.
Any question, comments about this? Okay, we need two-thirds.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt.
Aye.
Alder Herbs.
Aye.
Alder Jettser.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Vafadari.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. What else for Finance, Gabriela?
There's a treasure report for, through the end of November, and it reflects, as I said, it reflects all that crazy interest rates we're getting. I think our affordable housing fund is over $10 million now, which is pretty wild. Property tax collection is complete and the staff did a great work getting all that done. Any further property taxes, a second payment anyone requires to do goes to the county and not to the city. And then we, as a, as a reflection of that property tax, if you looked at the Finance Report, there was a ton of refund of tax payments. If anyone's curious about why that is, it's because when people have an escrow account, if it overpays, we have to refund that. So there's about 70 this year, which is around average. And they're closing out 2024 so that we can move into the audit. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Personnel Committee?
I think Alder Dantzler said he sent you his updates. Is that accurate?
No.
Then no updates.
Personnel did not meet since the last
I didn't think so, but.
Common Council meeting.
Okay. Public Safety and Human Services?
We didn't have a meeting.
Okay, so next we move to New Business and we have
R 3325 approving engineering services contract for Yarmouth Greenway Stream Bank Restoration.
Second.
Public Works approved.
RCC approved.
Finance approved.
Thank you. Dave Haidt, he wishes to speak. I don't know if you are in favor or in opposition.
So I want to talk about this in the context of the TMDL for, in this particular case, Nine Springs. And so, you know, you're looking at $35 million liability that has to be fulfilled in some way at some place. And part of the game is, is doing things that get you credit. So they should improve water quality, but they also should count toward the TMDL. So one of the questions is, does this count toward the TMDL? I'm not sure, so that's one question. The other point that I want to make is that this is going to be, this issue of getting credit is going to become much more important very quickly. So it's a long story, but there was a federal court decision a long time ago that said the way that MS4 permits are written are so vague in general that they amount to impermissible self-regulation. So the statutory changes for Wisconsin have already made it through in 2009. So the next permit up, which would be any day now, is going to require specific measurable goals with progress reports and all kinds of other things. So deferring this stuff in the future is going to become much, much more difficult than it has in the past. So kind of in that vein, one of the questions would be is if it's not creditable, so if you're going to spend the money and get no credit towards the TMDL, and given that it's basically, you're addressing the symptom, which is too much water flow, either continually and bursts, depends on the modeling, is there some way to do a bit more to either smooth out the water flow, infiltrate some somewhere? It's really hard in the Nine Springs Creek watershed. But you know, that's kind of the point there. And then the other thing is, different philosophies, but it would be interesting to know what is the wild gas at. So this is just for the engineering services, I presume. What's the actual cost going to be for implementation? Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Tim. Can you tell us about what is this? Or Ben, or is Ben this? Or Tim? Ben?
Yeah, Ben can provide a bit more detail. Yeah, so I can, I can speak to that as well, some of the questions that were posed. You know, of course, the meeting the TMDL requirements is the top priority, in my opinion, or, you know, one of the top priorities for the stormwater utility. So of course, any project that you do, you know, you're, you're hoping that it's going to be eligible for credits. So you're going to be able to get some kind of water quality benefit from these projects. One other piece of the TMDL, when you review their modeling guidance and the language in the permit, one of the assumptions that is made in the TMDL is that all conveyance channels are stable and not a source of sediment. So, you know, clearly we have this, this channel here that was, this greenway that was identified, you know, initially in 2013 as part of the Nine Springs Watershed Management Plan as, you know, really having some stability issues at the slope. There's evidence of significant erosion at several locations where you see vertical banks and even undercutting of the banks. So it's, it's pretty clear that this greenway is not stable and it, it is a source of sediment. So unfortunately, no, there would not be credits available for this. But at the same time, this is a project that I, I believe is needed to really, you know, we don't want to say that we're, yeah, all of, you know, all the greenways are, are stable and not a source of erosion when we do know there is a potentially very significant source of erosion, and that being the, the banks of the Yarmouth Greenway. So we actually did walk this greenway several times, just with myself, with, with Anna Healy to look at the vegetation. We also walked it with DNR, DNR staff, with some of their fisheries team and some of their waterway crews who provided a lot of valuable information. And really everyone was in agreement that yes, this is a significant source of sediment as was identified in 2013 and there, there should be repairs made to this. The other piece of this is, and, and I guess I, I can't say too much, I don't have all the knowledge now, but there is a desire to complete some restoration work in the Nine Springs E-way, east of Fish Hatchery. So the county's been doing their suck the muck projects and removing legacy phosphorus from the streams, you know, there's, you've got this huge area where it's kind of a diamond in the rough. And if there were to be any kind of significant restoration work performed at that location, ideally, you could have as much stability upstream of that so you're not sending these excessive amounts of sediment down to this area, which you have just spent, you know, probably a lot of dollars trying to, trying to restore. So there, those are kind of the, the few reasons why this is seen as, as a priority project at, at this point.
A couple of years ago, they were looking at Lake Mendota and the discharge they'd get, and they found that under large storms, you know, we'd have these small little streams. Well, they had a lot of muck and the, the heavy water volume would flush that out and dump it, dump it downstream. So that's kind of what the county's, county is getting at. And the last thing we want to do is spend that money and then fill it up with, fill it up with muck from Yarmouth Greenway, you know, moving forward.
Interesting, okay. Any other comment, question? All those in favor of Resolution R-33-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
Mayor, I'd like to move to extend the meeting 30 minutes.
Okay.
30 minutes.
All, all those in favor of extending the minutes, 30 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
Nay. I'll move approval of Resolution R 3425 amending 2025 TID 9 budget for the Lacy Road Roundabout Project.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
So this was, you know, we were installing some cabling for some lights and Tim, Tim and Public Works determined that that, the expenditures for that are, are qualified for the TID. And so that's what this is, is about to use TID dollars to pay for these various electrical work by the roundabout.
Okay, any question or comment? Jay?
Yeah, Tim, how many streetlights are running off of this service that we're installing?
So this particular service is just for the, the roundabout and then also the RRFBs. There's another service that MG&E has along Comrus and that they'll take it from about 400 feet east of Fish Rona to the roundabout. So there's two, two services for this.
Well, the third, whereas Claus says that this is powering streetlights and the RRFBs.
Correct.
So, so how many streetlights are being controlled, run by this?
I don't have the exact number of, of streetlights.
The, the reason I'm asking that question is because we're installing a 200 amp service and in an environment now where all the lights we're putting in are LED lights, I just can't imagine that we're going to need a 200 amp service. Plus, I mean, that's, that, that requires a 2-ott copper cable, which is pretty pricey these days. It seems, I would, have we looked into whether we actually need 200 amps?
No more than I do. I'm not even sure you can get 100 amp service anymore, to be honest with you. I don't, I don't know this for sure.
So we had a conversation about amps, hamperd service related to the Pico Ball project, the expansion there with the lighting. And we could actually get a, I think, 100 amp service there to power those lights. But surprisingly, the amperage at those lights, which also my assumption would be is that those are LED, was going to be more than what we would have preferred to have on that 100 amp service. And it would not have given us any flexibility moving forward. And if I recall correctly through that conversation, the, the price increase to go to 200 amp was like a handful of $1,000. It was, it was so minimal that we're like, just do 200 to give us the flexibility to move forward. Hmm. Well, I mean, the, the price difference between the 2-ott cable that you have to have for 200 amp and the, the number two cable that you can use with 100 amp is pretty substantial. And it looks like we're running, you know, maybe 400 feet of this, 340 feet, which is, or, and actually, they're putting, oh, they're putting in 4-ott aluminum cable. So I don't know. I mean, it seems, it just, I don't know, I
What is your problem?
Well, if we, if we went with a smaller service, it probably wouldn't require this budget amendment, is my thought. Maybe that's wrong, but I guess I'll vote in favor of this, but can we, can we ask that question again?
I'm, I'm pretty sure this is just an amendment to move money. I don't think this has anything to do with actually approving the, the specs of the work.
We already did that.
We're just allocating the money, we're moving it from, from the current funding source to the TID.
I think it was already done, this project. We already voted.
So it's like, it, we, this has nothing to do with that.
Yeah, we already voted.
Well, that's okay, but we can review it and see if this is what we actually need.
But it's done, like, it's done.
Is this installed, Tim?
No, it's not installed until this is executed that we won't get put on their work schedule. So once this document's executed, then we'll be put on their work schedule.
Well, let, let's ask that question because there's no reason, it doesn't seem to me that we have a reason to put in a 200 amp service here. But I don't know. I mean, they can do the load calculations and figure it out.
Okay, any other question, comment? We need to settle the vote. So we need to do roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jettser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Vafadari?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next one.
I'll move approval of Resolution R 4D25 approving renewal of VX rail and VM ware, server hardware support, software support and licensing. And this is a direct referral.
Second.
Finance approved.
Thank you.
This is, the company that we've used for these services was purchased by a larger company and the prices are going up significantly. Therefore, we need to increase the budget to allocate, to, to account for that. And the staff in the meantime can take a look over the next year about whether or not they want to switch to a different service, but we need to continue using it, so.
Any question, comment?
What, what exactly does this software do for us? This is virtual servers. Oh, so we're renting space somewhere else? I don't know exactly how virtual servers work.
Virtual servers are just a much safer way to store things. Nobody has servers on-prem other than large data warehouse structures. VM is best practice across IT in general.
VM ware is the original virtualization software, dates back to the mid 90s. It's basically, you can, you can run several virtual servers on a given piece of hardware. This is, you know, all the cloud providers, any, anytime you get a server from the cloud provider, it's going to be some sort of a VM like this.
Okay, good to know. All those in favor of Resolution R-40-25, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. So next we move to Alder District Report. You have one minute and we start with, we start with District 4.
I don't do my best work past 10:00 PM at night, so District 4 is doing great and I'm going to make a brave statement and say we're very happy that the Eagles won the Super Bowl. Go Birds.
Nothing in the district, but hopefully my flight won't be canceled on Thursday so I can get it, get to the Super Bowl party on Friday.
Oh, good for you, okay. District 3, Jay?
All's quiet in District 3 right now.
Okay, 2?
Everyone has something on their ballot. You at least have State Superintendent of Public Instruction on your ballot, so go vote next week.
Okay, Bill?
Two for one, that was going to be my report.
One quick thing, there is a Know Your Rights workshop around issues of immigration. It's going to be this Friday, February 14th. It's technically across the border in Madison. It'll be 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM at Reach Dane, 2096 Red Arrow Trail in Madison, and a community meal will be offered. It's hosted by the Allied Dunsmarsh Neighborhood Association.
Thank you. Dave?
I think you're reporting.
Okay, so announcement, next council meeting will be February 25th and next Committee of the Whole is February 26th. And what is going to be the topic?
Current topic is stormwater utility overview.
Okay, thank you.
As well as covering their role in the development process.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion to adjourn.
Some rule.
Second. All those in favor of adjourned in the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, be adjourned. Thank you. Buenos noches.